All right, I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, May 14th, board meeting, the San Barbara Unified School District. And we will begin with the flag salute.
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have Spanish translations. We also have headsets for the hearing impaired available. We will begin with introductions, proclamations, presentations. Dr. Cash.
Thank you very much, President Lamone. We're going to start with our student report. We have Lauren Van Volkenberg from Dos Pueblos High School along with, are you doing it solo?
No.
Lizzie McGuire. Casey McGuire, sorry.
Hi, so we have a report from each of the high schools, starting with Dos Pueblos. We wanted to report that we had a very successful prom this Saturday at the Bakara, as well as leadership interviews that are happening this week, and the new class will be announced on Friday. Senior awards is also occurring next week, Monday, the 20th, in the PAC at 7:00 PM. The talent show is happening next week on the 21st, and senior checkout, I believe for all the high schools, is on June 3rd, and graduation is on the 6th. So Marcus would like to report that their third annual Royal Regada took place a few weeks ago during star testing. This senior activity consisted of boats made of cardboard and duct tape that seniors rode in the pool and they raced. Their spring musical also just occurred. It was thoroughly modern milling, and it was reported that it was a huge hit. They also just had their poetry slam, which was packed into the library. Students performed original poetry and were judged by their teachers. They also recently had their prom. The theme was the roaring twenties, and that took place at the Montecito Country Club on April the 27th. And their annual Mr. Royal competition is coming up. This is where the whole school gets...
Senior guys strut their stuff in their end-of-the-year tradition. The boys are judged by San Marcos staff on formal wear, swimwear, and for their talent.
All right, next we have Santa Barbara. They have Kiss a Senior Goodbye, which is a fundraiser for seniors. And they get a little box, I think they're selling a little box filled with chocolate, and it has a big lip-shaped chocolate on the top, so Kiss a Senior Goodbye. And it'll have a little note hanging on it, so I think they can send that to each other. They're planning prom, which I believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is this weekend?
Yeah.
Yeah, no? Yes, oh.
Next weekend.
Next week, okay, next weekend. Thank you. And that theme will be Finding Neverland, so that's going to be fun. And the nominations of the king and queen are, it's going to be a surprise. It's going to be on the Friday before, I believe, yeah. And Operation, they mentioned Operation Prom Dress, which is a really great organization. They have really, really, really nice dresses for, you can borrow it for free if you dry-clean it, or you can buy them, they're really budgeted. Prom slash grad night tickets go on sale starting Monday, the 13th, which was yesterday. So they're on sale now. They have lei sales starting tomorrow, which are, you know, flower necklaces, they're going to be, which they can wear at graduation. There's a car wash, which is the last senior fundraiser for prom, and it'll be held on the 19th. So that's coming up. And the Quad Grub, which is a fundraiser for soon-to-be seniors, so it's raising up for their class. For middle college students, after completing the novel Enrique's Journey, middle college students attended book club meetings with fellow students to discuss their opinions. All middle college students are currently preparing for next week's SBCC final exams. Additionally, middle college students are also preparing for their middle college end-of-the-semester final project. Students are given the option to focus their project on either an experience with 30-day challenges or a topic mentioned in Time Magazine, which they want to research further. Juniors are currently choosing their final semester SBCC classes. And seniors who are attending CC have, who have completed their enrollment process of application, orientation, and advising, they should have that all done, so.
Comments or questions from the board on that?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good luck for the rest of the year. Many people have heard me from the spot since the, the last two years since I've been back, talk about what an incredible community Santa Barbara is, and how supportive the community is of public education, teachers, and students. And tonight, I get the opportunity on behalf of our district, and I'm certain the board as well, to recognize two incredibly generous people in this community who for over a decade have made it possible for teachers to have very special wishes come true for them in their classrooms. And they are Renee Grubb and Ed Adick from Village Properties. And before I call them up here, I really, I want to emphasize what these two have done and what their business Village Properties has done as well. Over $1 million has been given to teachers for projects in their classrooms. I'm going to say that again, over $1 million. That is a huge amount of money. And I have spoke to dozens of teachers in this, in the past two years since I've returned about how incredible it was to get that notification that something that they wanted or they knew that they needed was going to be funded through the Teachers Fund, thanks to Village Properties. And they would often very proudly point it out to me in the classroom. You see this rug, or you see this library of books I got here. I had to change grade levels. I had to go from fifth grade to second grade, and I really only had fifth and sixth grade books. But I wrote out the grant, and here's the library I got for my new class. Isn't that amazing? And I would say time and time again, you are right, it is amazing that we have people in our community that do that. So I'm going to give you a very small token of our appreciation. If you could come forward, I'd love to give it to you. And this is with appreciation for Village Properties' commitments to academic excellence and all the incredible work that you guys have done. A very small token of our appreciation. The public recognition should be much larger, and hopefully, this is the beginning of a lot of public recognition of the work that you've done for over a decade for kids in our community. So Renee, thank you.
Well, we're trying to get a photo op here, so we can, yeah, we do need you, yes, I think so. You know, we might put on Facebook or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, I'm not going to take a lot of time. Thank you so much for this honor. We are very, very pleased. We didn't know 10 years ago that it would be as successful as it is, and we're thrilled that we can do a little part to help our teachers in the classroom. So, you know, it's interesting because at the beginning, it seemed like they were sort of special little items. Now, you know, with the budget cuts and things, over the last few years, we've been getting, you know, a lot of basic needs, and I can't tell you how many rugs for kindergarten and first-grade classes we've, yeah, funded, and those are so adorable. And we love it because we get the recognition from the teachers and the students, so we're very proud about that. Thank you.
I'd echo everything Renee said, and I think for us, Renee's been here for a long time. I was born and raised and never left. Just ironically, looking at Ed Heron was a man foolish enough to hire me in 1975 as my first broker. I don't know that I would have done it if I were him. Things worked out really well for me, and I'm really happy to give back. And I just would say to everybody, you know, a middle-class kid from McKinley School, it worked out pretty well, so I think anybody can do it. And this is just, actually Renee said, a token for us to give back. But thank you for the recognition.
Thank you.
I'd just like to comment. I've been a friendly competitor to Village Properties for years, and, well, I was. And I always admired this effort they had for students and teachers. No red tape, small amounts, I mean, I don't, how many total contributions have you made? What's the average?
It's just a little under 1,800 classrooms and over $1 million.
Yeah, so very small amounts that teachers can't get anyplace else other than out of their pockets. And this is a need that, when you look at the agents at, not just Village Properties, but they get help from all sorts of other businesses in town that support the effort, and even competitors support the effort because they see the need for it. And to get real estate agents all focused on the same agenda is very, very, very difficult. I've been there, I know it. And my dad was fortunate enough, I think maybe he'd be the one to hire Ed. And my dad always believed that if he trained agents to go out and be on their own and be successful, that made him the happiest in the world. He never minded creating better competition. So Ed and Renee, you both are examples of that, and I appreciate it very much.
Ed, we appreciate your donations as well.
Thank you, Village Properties.
My broker doesn't know that.
As you may have heard, Dos Pueblos High School students took first place in the Carnegie Mellon's Toaster Wars. And this is tough to say sitting up here, but it's a hacking competition designed to encourage computer security and computer science education. The National Security Agency, which is home to America's code-makers and code-breakers, provided funding, and Symantec, Intel, Microsoft, and Amazon donated the prizes. 10,000 students participated in the competition. And this morning, we heard from the event organizer, Professor David Brumley, that he was impressed, he quote, "with our team's critical thinking skills and endurance." In addition, he indicated that the Dos Pueblos High School students solved all the problems in this extremely rigorous competition. The problems were very, very hard, and we frankly didn't expect all the problems to be solved by anyone. The team completely blew me away, end quote. We plan to invite the team to the next board meeting. The students' win will mean $8,000 to Dos Pueblos High School, plus $4,000 to the team, plus Amazon Web Service, as well as technical books. Tremendous, tremendous victory for students at Dos Pueblos. Avance, a program within our Thrive initiative, is going to have a ceremony at, for Harding and McKinley Schools. Parents from 60 families will graduate from the Avance program on Saturday, May 18th, at 9:45 at McKinley School, and I invite everyone out to celebrate that. I know I'll be there. The final theater performance starts on May 31st, and it's at Lacumbera Junior High School. We got to hear that incredible band and their drum corps today. And the performance will be guys and dolls. And for those of you that attended our secondary school performances this year, you know that our students have done an incredible job. I was able to get out to two of the three, and for one, it was the funniest show I'd ever seen. And the other just had tremendous music and dancing by our kids. Today, the last comment I'll make, the May revise was released. And the governor annually proposes a budget in January, and then in May revises his proposal based upon what has happened in between January and May. And the May revise is very similar to the governor's January proposal, which has the new funding formula for schools in grades kindergarten through 12th grade. But immediately following the governor's May revision, both the Senator, the President of the Senate for California and the Speaker of the Assembly held press conferences announcing their disagreement with portions of the budget. So I'll just tell everyone, stay tuned. And hopefully, we'll have a budget from the state of California before its constitutional deadline of June 15th. So with that, I would conclude the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. We do have, I believe, board correspondence and board comments. Or maybe we don't.
Yes.
Ms. Adelson.
I attended the poetry slam and was a judge there in the finals at San Marcos High School, and it was fantastic. There were four finalists, and each won place, but we chose a first, second, third, and fourth place. And such talent, they were given a topic, and within 24 hours had to do a full poetry reading of what they had created, and it was just wonderful. And then at Santa Barbara Junior High, I enjoyed the Civil War days. That is the morning of demonstrations and reenactments of Civil War, firing of a cannon, rebuilt cannon, and descriptions, and an actor who plays Lincoln in the Marjorie Luke Theater, and really thoroughly enjoyed that. And also a parent lunch day at Santa Barbara Junior High. And then at the high school, saw over the weekend Madrigal's Spring Singing and Men's Ensemble by Santa Barbara High School students. That was just magical, so it was really fun.
Mr. Heron.
Thank you. I'd like to report, I did attend an autism first responders program. The morning was dedicated to local enforcement officers, probation, police, sheriff. And I understand, that was a very good success. And in the evening, they brought in parents and other interested parties. And it's just basically good training on, if you're an autistic parent, how to alert people involved with your children, what to do in case the child becomes lost. And I just read an article this past week that one out of two children with autism that take off end up seriously hurt. So it was a very timely presentation by the Autism Society. UCSB Economic Forecast Project took place. We were fortunate to have them donate 45 tickets to our economic kids at all the high schools, including Carpenteria and Alta Vista. And so 45 of our economics students got to attend the seminar. It was all day, all half-day at the Granada. And the reports back, I got that students truly enjoyed it. Icon put on an art show and music show at Franklin. The art, and there's some here from, I think that might be McKinley, I think. But the artwork that these kids do is absolutely unbelievable. And Icon just does such a tremendous service to all of our students that it's unbelievable. Went to Harding School and helped the Lions Club give out 500 flags to every child at school. And so they, the memes didn't show up, but we still folded a flag correctly. And we gave them all little flags, and then I had the privilege of educating them as to what the stars meant, what the stripes mean, what the colors mean, which was interesting. And then last week, I attended CSBA Action Day, met with Doss Williams Office, and talked about the budget, among other things, and charter schools and parcel taxes. And it was interesting to talk to our legislator and get, sort of get the feel of that, of his department as to what his feelings are on these items. So it was a good two weeks we had the last, since the last meeting.
And I will just add that I know that one of the items that's come up for board discussion has been the swim program that we do. And I had the opportunity to go to the last swim session with McKinley and Harding students. And they are brave. They were jumping off the diveboard, and the really high one too, only after, I think, eight sessions. And so it's a really great UCSB partnership also with our after-school program. So that was really nice to see. Dr. Bass.
Actually, Madam President, I had the opportunity to go to the education celebration, which was last week, where proudly they were, it was announced that our new teacher of the year is a Dos Pueblos High School teacher, and so I'm very proud of that. And actually, Dr. Cash's wife was also recognized, which was really great. We had the opportunity to actually share that moment with Dr. Cash's wife. And we had a number of other teachers from our school district that were also recognized, so it was a great night.
Lots of things happening this month. All right, and we don't have any reportable announcements of closed session. I am looking at the time because we have a time-certain item at 7:00, which is about a minute and a half away. So I'm going to go ahead and do the time-certain public hearing, and then I will come back to public comment. So for that, I will close the regular board meeting and open up our public hearing. And I think we have Mr. Tadashi's going to introduce the item.
Madam President, members of the board. Each year, we are required by Education Code to bring to you this item, which is a public hearing regarding the proposed use of Tier III categorical funds and to approve a resolution of the planned spending for the following fiscal year. Categorical funding refers to the state dollars that are tied to specific purposes, and the state requires those categorical dollars to be spent on those purposes. But through the recent budget problems at the state and with school districts, one of the shell games the state played was to allow us to use some of those categorical programs for the desperate needs of the districts to avoid such things as layoffs and other unrestricted needs of the district. And so what you have in front of you is a schedule, the planned schedule, for the following fiscal year of those categorical programs. We call them Tier III categorical programs. And we've assigned them all specific codes in our general ledger so that we can continue to identify them, even though we've been able to move them over to the unrestricted side of the ledger. We do have all of the projected revenues of these programs to be about a little over $5.2 million, and we do have them all planned out as far as how we plan to spend those funds. But each year, like I said, we're required to bring them to you in a public hearing and take public comment as far as how we spend these dollars. So staff recommends that the board approve Resolution Number 2012-13-52 regarding the Tier III categorical flexibility.
Thank you, Mr. Tadashi. Ms. Parker.
I'm not sure if this is a question for Mr. Tadaski, or Ms. Jete, or Dr. Cash, and that is, will this, will this go away if the, I mean, I know that this is supposed to, I think, fade away anyway in 14, 15, but will this go away sooner, I guess, if local control funding comes in next year?
Technically, it has already gone away, that these categorical funds are already on the unrestricted side. We didn't even have to give these codes to them, but we thought that, since these are mostly site budgets, that we needed to control how much money went in each bucket of money, bucket, so that we can allocate it out. So we plan to kind of do the same thing with whatever the board chooses to fund if we go through LCFF, so we can track it. Plus, we have to do a local plan to show that we're spending the money on the certain ways with that local plan on the local control funding. So we have to tie those two things out, the budget and the local plan. So we'll probably keep them in some sort of grouping, just so we know how much to allocate out.
But it won't come before you as a resolution, like, in this formal way?
Exactly.
Yes, this will be the last time.
Mr. Heron.
Are there any surprises in this? Is this pretty typical from last year?
It's very typical from last year, and the School Services of California has recommended flat funding, which there's no increases and no decreases. And the way we've allocated this out is pretty much how we did it this year, with the majority of it going to teachers and aides' salaries and benefits.
And remember that part of the fiscal solvency was to sweep some of these funds to help in the fiscal crisis.
Okay, I noticed, you know, the one I'm looking at particularly, I guess, is counseling. It's a pretty big reduction. Does that contemplate changing our, any relationship we have with counselors this year versus last year that's coming here versus this year?
No.
No.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? And I believe we don't have any public comment for this item. Do we vote in the public hearing or after the public hearing?
Yeah, close the public hearing, then vote on the resolution.
I'm going to close the public hearing. And then we can take.
I will move to approve Resolution Number 2012/13-52 regarding Tier III categorical flexibility.
One second.
All right. Any additional discussion?
Just one more question. Are parcel taxes being used to replace any of these reductions?
No.
Thank you.
All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, 5-0. All right, with that, we will return to public comment. And we do have public comment?
Yes, we have two speakers for public comment. As usual, for English language, it's three minutes. For bilingual, it's six minutes. And our first speaker is Rogelio Rivas.
Hi. This is, this is Rogelio Rivas, we're classifying English learners. And dear members of the school board, my name is Rogelio Rivas, and I am writing to you on behalf of the Padres Adelante class from Adelante Charter School, which I am a member. We request that the school district take more into account all the English learner students in the district who are eligible to reclassify, but who have not been reclassified. We ask that our school do everything possible to prepare English learner students, monitoring their academic progress, checking their test results, and ensuring that once they are eligible, that they be reclassified. We have a large number of students in the district who are eligible but are not classified. And thank you very much for your time and attention. Spanish. Me llamo Rogelio Rivas. Y me dirijo a ustedes a nombre de la clase de Padres Adelante. De la escuela Padres Adelante. Soy miembro, del cual soy miembro. Solicito que el Instituto Escolar tome más en cuenta todos los alumnos del aprendizaje de inglés en el Distrito, los cuales son elegibles para ser reclassificados. Sin embargo, no hay reclassificados. Les pedimos que nuestras escuelas hagan todo lo posible para capacitar dichos alumnos, revisar bien los resultados de los exámenes, monitoreando sus progresos académicos, y asegurar que los que son elegibles sean reclassificados, ya que los datos muestran que tenemos un alto índice de alumnos que son elegibles. Dichos alumnos merecen todo nuestro apoyo para que puedan triunfar y alcanzar las metas en sus estudios, para que cuando llegan a la preparatoria estarán listos para tomar las clases más avanzadas. Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you, and next we have Margarita Dominguez.
I'm going to do it in Spanish first and then in English. Buenas tardes, respetables miembros de la mesa directiva. Mi nombre es Margarita Dominguez. Soy madre de una estudiante de octavo grado en la Santa Barbara Junior High, y una niña que cursa el segundo grado en Adelante Charter School. Soy una de las madres tomando la clase de Padres Adelante en la Adelante Charter School. La razón de mi visita es que los padres hispanos necesitamos más información para saber las herramientas necesarias para guiar a nuestros hijos a llegar a la universidad. Necesitamos educarnos más acerca de becas, préstamos, y recursos disponibles que el Estado de California y otras organizaciones les ofrece a nuestros estudiantes, para que así nuestros hijos logren ser exitosos y graduarse de la universidad. Para nosotros es muy importante cambiar las estadísticas. Queremos que el número de estudiantes hispanos graduados de universidad con maestrías y doctorados crezca. Y de la única manera que podemos lograr nuestra meta es educándonos a nosotros los padres, para que así nosotros guiemos a nuestros hijos a conseguir sus sueños. Yo realmente creo que la ignorancia en los diferentes recursos económicos ha impedido que muchos más de nuestros niños no consigan el asistir a una universidad. Les pido de la manera más atenta que provean más talleres y clases de nuestro idioma para que la comunidad esté educada en este tema, porque la sabiduría es poder. Muchas gracias por su tiempo, y a ti... Muchas gracias por su tiempo y atención. Good evening, respected members of the school Board. My name is Margarita Dominguez. I'm a mother of an eighth grader at Santa Barbara Junior High and a second grader at the Adelante Charter School. I'm in one of the parent taking, I'm one of the parents taking the Adelante parent leadership class at the Adelante Charter School. The reason for my visit is that Hispanic parents need more information and to get the tools they need to guide our children to go to college. We encourage schools to provide more workshops and classes in our language on this topic. As parents, we need to encourage ourselves, we need to educate ourselves more about scholarships, loans, and resources provided by the State of California and other organizations for our students, so that our children can gain greater academic achievement, become more successful, and graduate from college. For us, it is very important to change the statistics. We want the number of Hispanic college graduates with masters and PhD to go up. And the only way we can achieve our goal is by parents educating ourselves, so that we can guide our children to achieve their dreams. I truly believe that the lack of information about different economic resources that are available to our students impedes many more of our children that they fail to attend a university because their parents were not aware. I respectfully ask that there be more parent workshops and classes in our language, so that our community is educated on this issue. And that, and they come to understand that knowledge is power. Thank you very much for your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that's it for public comment. I do think that, just following up on that last speaker, would be really helpful for the Board to get and for the district to get the latest Pew research that came out today about how now with the Class of 2012, more Latino students are going to college than white students. It's a sea change.
Will do.
All right, thank you. We are now moving on to the Consent Agenda, Board. Are there any items from the Consent Agenda that we would like to pull?
Madam President, before the Board considers that, I need to inform the Board that two items have changed. D-10 has a new attachment, which copies on the dais and copies back at the back table, as well as E-2, a field trip, was added today. When the field trip was originally given to the district, did not include students being in a boat on the water. We discovered that today, and their intention is to take the trip Thursday.
All right, well, thank you. Board, any items that you would like to pull? I will need to pull the Board personnel list, only to abstain. All right.
I'll move to approve the remainder of the Consent Agenda, less the personal action form.
Do we have a second?
Second, yeah.
Okay. All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then we can take the personnel list.
I'll move to approve the Human Resources Personal Actions, item E-5.
My second.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? I abstain. Motion passes 4-0 with one abstention. All right, this leads us to our Action Agenda. We've already had our public hearing, so we will move to the approval of naming of the baseball field at Santa Barbara Junior High School. Dr. Cash?
Well, President Lamone, it's once in a lifetime that you have an opportunity to recognize a true leader in our community. And we have a number of people here that are gonna speak more eloquently than I can or would be able to regarding this item. But I will say, on both a personal and professional note, that I've known Bill Oliphant for over 20 years. I've known him as an official, as a teacher, and as a coach. And in all those capacities, he has demonstrated what it means to be a true professional. He's mentored thousands of youngsters in our community, and it's really wonderful to have this item before the Board this evening, so. With that, we'll turn it over to Dave Hett Young.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. This item surfaced a few years back, and we had a change of principals at Santa Barbara High School. And it kind of got set on the side, and now our principal at Santa Barbara Junior High, where this field is located, is our principal at Santa Barbara High School. And so as Mr. Beccio was aware of this before, now Mr. Garcia, Lito Garcia, the principal of Santa Barbara Junior High, is also in agreement to name this field after this individual for all the work and effort that they gave back to the community. And so it's not something that was just thought of. It's been thought of for quite a few number of years, and it's just now making its way to the Board. I'm honored to bring it to the Board, and I'll turn it over to Principal John Beccio and some of the baseball people from Santa Barbara High.
Thank you, members of the Board, Dr. Cash. I wanted to, we have a bunch of people here that'll speak about Bill Oliphant, but about five or six years ago, this was brought to my attention as the principal at Santa Barbara Junior High. I was in support of it then. I've known Bill to put many, many hours into the field, and I think back about five or six years ago, it got hung up on, we didn't have a monetary donation to attach to the naming of the field. And so I did a little math today, and I thought I'd bring to you, first of all, Bill works in baseball, just talking about coaching. He works for less than a dollar an hour, probably 50 cents. Most coaches do, but he's done that for 40 years. And then I also took the liberty of adding up what his time would be worth, very conservative. I put $10 an hour to it, and what he's given to the district in terms of volunteering his time, and it was roughly $500,000 or $600,000, maybe even north of that. So there's, you could make a case that there's some money attached to that, so there you go. But I'm going to turn it over. We have our athletic director here, we have president of the baseball booster club, Perry Parker. We have parents, we have players that played for Coach Oliphant and former coaches at Santa Barbara High. So I'm not sure the format or if they submitted speaking cards, but I'll call up our athletic director, Joe Chenoweth, and Eric Nickerson. Eric came to me when I was principal at the junior high, that's how I met him, came into my office with this idea, and he's never quit.
Thank you, John.
He's not a quitter.
Usually I would be extemporaneous in something like this, because it's more proper to look my audience in the eye, but for this, it's so important to me that I prepared a statement, and if you will, I'll read it to you now. Good evening, Board members. My name is Eric Nickerson. I'm a teacher at Santa Barbara High School. Tonight, I am here as the parent of a former Don's player, and speaking on behalf of scores of other current and former players and their families. Our request is simple. We would like your permission to name the baseball field at Santa Barbara Junior High in honor of retiring freshman baseball coach, Bill Oliphant. Mr. O., or Coach O., as he is known to hundreds of former students and players at Santa Barbara High School, has dedicated nearly 40 years of his life to coaching, and he's finally decided that that's enough. For the majority of that time, Coach taught baseball on the field located at the junior high. I stress the word "taught," because even though most of the young men he worked with had played baseball prior to meeting him, they had never really been coached before. No disrespect at all to any of the well-meaning fathers and other adult volunteers who shared their passion for this grand game of baseball with their sons, from T-ball through Little League or Pony League. But true coaching requires a skill set that few possess. A coach is not your friend, though he likes you. A coach is not your parent, though he may be one. What a coach is can be summed up in two words: a teacher. And in that respect, I can say with 100% conviction that I have never met another coach like Bill Oliphant. Those who know him may say that he can be gruff or sarcastic, and his corny sayings usually go way over the heads of his young players. But beneath his exterior is a man who is devoted to the craft of teaching. From the first practice of the season to the last inning of the final game in the spring, Coach O. is constantly coaching and instructing his players. It's been said that baseball is a metaphor for life. What happens to the young men who have experienced a season with Coach O. can stay with them for a lifetime. His teaching transcends the game of baseball and offers important life lessons. Character, self-respect, and honesty are just a few of the many teaching points he has covered during his time with our sons. And whether they know it or not, a season under the guidance of Coach O. truly does make an impression on them. And at the end of the game, win, lose, or tie, Coach O. was fond of saying, now, I'm sorry, I'm gonna try Coach O., "Well, you know, there are billions of people in China who have no idea we played baseball today." Sorry, Coach. That really may be true, but it does put it in perspective. There are hundreds of young men who do know that they played for Coach O. and are better people for it. Thank you.
Hello, Board, and Dr. Cash. This is my first year at Santa Barbara High School, as many of you already know, and I must say, Coach Oliphant, I actually, he was one of my people who officiated me when I was younger, and I always looked at that gentleman, and I said, "He got that call wrong." But truly, he does. He inspires young athletes. He comes in the office. He doesn't have an assistant coach. He doesn't do it for the money. He always, you know, I asked him, "What are you gonna get for your stipend?" And he just says, "Give it back to the program." And that's just, that really tells you what the kind of person he is. Mr. Nick eloquently said that many of his athletes, some are here tonight, but truly thousands have been touched by his giving back to them, their families, their younger siblings, and truly has made an impact in Santa Barbara. So I hope you will vote to allow us to name this field in his honor. I'm not sure if anyone else would like to come up and say a few words.
You do have, we do have a couple of public comments on this, that maybe we'll go ahead and call those, and then see. Mike Kano, followed by Sheri Rae McKinney.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Cash. My name's Mike Kano. I'm a longtime friend of Bill Oliphant's. He was my mentor in officiating. I've been an official for 32 years. Bill recently retired after 37 years, I do believe, it may be longer. But just to show his, your support to name the field after him, Bill does teach the game of baseball, but he also teaches his student athletes the game of life. And we're together a lot, we do a lot of things together, we travel, and no matter where we go, it never fails, someone comes up, "Coach O., Mr. O." And it, I don't know how he does it, but he remembers the student's name. And Bill does have a huge heart. His last game was Thursday. I watched him, talked to him today. He's gonna miss it, but he has three grandchildren that are moving out to California this summer that he's gonna be taking care of, so just showing his support, please name that field after him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kano, and Sheri Rae McKinney.
Good evening, Madam President, and School Board members, and Dr. Cash. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As a baseball mom, I spent this afternoon working in the snack bar at Eddie Matthews' Field, watching the Santa Barbara Don's baseball team at Warwick or Diamond. The Don's won their first CIF playoff game and will go on to play Redlands on Friday. Nearly every member of that varsity team was well-schooled by Coach Oliphant, playing on the junior high field as freshmen all through the school year. It will be a special tribute to name the field for him, a coach who helps shape freshman boys into fine young men who exhibit excellence, fine character, and teamwork, taught by Coach Oliphant in the classroom, on the field, and in the community. Thank you.
All right, hearing, no?
I just wanted to make one last comment, and that is that, I know it was mentioned earlier, but Lito Garcia texted me from Denver today, and he is fully supportive of the naming of that field after Coach Oliphant.
We have a couple of ex-players. Anyone else wanna talk to the item? Don't have to.
Thank you.
Ah, Coach Moropoulos.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm gonna speak very quickly, 'cause I don't have anything written down, but sometimes you don't need anything written down. And when you talk about something that's emotional, like your son, when you take your son, and I've known Bill for a long time, since I was about this tall, and I've grown up around him, and I've seen him as a, you know, as a teacher, as a coach, and watching him and handing my son off to him last year as a freshman baseball player, but I got to watch him, you know, as a friend, and talk to him and listen to him, how he talked about his players, and that's what's special about Bill Oliphant, the passion that he has for young people. And he always talks about, you know, "How's your son doing? How's Trevor doing? How's this?" And, you know, "How's he doing as a sophomore? How's he doing in the junior varsity team?" And he really, truly cares. And what he did for my son, that's why, you know, I've decided to come up here and, you know, and say, "There's not a better person to name a baseball diamond for than Bill Oliphant," because he taught my son about life, just happened to be with a ball in his hand, but he taught him about life, and that's extremely valuable to me, and that man is extremely valuable to me. So I hope you vote to name that Bill Oliphant field, 'cause there couldn't be a better person to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Board, any comments?
Well, I have the privilege to say that my ninth-grade son had Bill Oliphant this season for his coach. It was an outstanding experience as a parent, and for my son, obviously. I think one thing that didn't come up in this discussion was, he mentioned to me that he played on that junior high field himself at 11 years old. That was so touching. I mean, I think this belongs with his name on it. And, yes, just very powerful, very positive.
Thank you. And I will add that Mr. O. was my leadership teacher at Santa Barbara High School, and so I think he touched the lives of a lot of students, not just those in baseball. And so when I served as junior and senior class president, and then he saw me running for school board, it was quite the moment for both of us. And I know he keeps in touch with the baseball alumni. My brother was just telling me that he's still in contact with Mr. O. So it's an honor to have the privilege to have this discussion, because really, there's so many amazing teachers in our district, and you just never know when lives will, when our lives and our paths will cross again. So I really value all he taught me, as far as my early leadership skills and abilities in high school, so really neat to be here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the naming of the baseball field for Bill Oliphant at Santa Barbara Junior High School.
Second.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Madam President, we'll work with Santa Barbara High School, our Facilities Department, and we'll get the appropriate signage, we'll get a date, and we'll inform the community as when we'll have that ceremony, the official naming.
Great, thank you, Dr. Cash. Next, we are moving to approval of Resolution 2012/13-42, designating the week of May 19 through 25th as Classified School Employees Week in the Santa Barbara Unified School District. And I believe we have that. Great. So here we go. Whereas classified professionals provide valuable services to the schools and students of the Santa Barbara Unified School District, and whereas classified professionals contribute to the establishment and promotion of a positive instructional environment, and whereas classified professionals serve a vital role in providing for the welfare and safety of Santa Barbara Unified School District students, and whereas classified professionals employed by the Santa Barbara Unified School District strive for excellence in all areas relative to the educational community, therefore, be it resolved that the Santa Barbara Unified School District hereby recognizes and wishes to honor the contribution of the classified professionals to quality education in the Santa, in the state of California and in the Santa Barbara Unified School District, and declares the week of May 19 through 25th, 2013, as Classified School Employee Week in the Santa Barbara Unified School District. All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, we are moving on to Board action on student discipline cases, and we have four different cases.
In case number 2012/13-19, I move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel for a suspended expulsion with one change, and that is that placement be at an alternative high school site and not a comprehensive high school site.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes five-zero.
In case 2012/13-20, I move to approve the recommendation of the hearing panel for a suspended expulsion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes five-zero.
In 2012/13-21, I move to approve the stipulated agreement for a full school year expulsion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes five-zero.
And in 2012/13-23, I also move to approve the stipulated agreement for a full school year expulsion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes five-zero.
This leads us to our conference agenda, and we begin with a presentation to the Board from the Wellness Council.
Well, we have not only the Chair of the Wellness Council, but a great teacher at Todeskopoulos High School, so I'll let her share with you the great work that this Wellness Council has done this year.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Good evening, Board members and Board President Limone. Thank you for having me tonight, and I do have some slides. Thank you. I've been your Chair for three years now. I took over for Debbie Badger three years ago, when she moved on to more work with child development. And I wanna thank Susan Horn, who's sitting here in the audience, for initially recruiting me to the Wellness Council. I think it was in '04, when I just was interested in wellness and healthy things for our children and our students. So now I find myself as the Chair with a little bit more responsibility, but a little bit more fun at the same time. So the Wellness Council was formed, as you may know, as a result of a law that was passed in 2004, requiring school districts to have a Wellness Council and a Wellness Policy by '06, '07. And then that was reenacted or reissued in 2010 with the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010. And I noticed, actually, on our website, that there's a comparison of the new requirements from the 2010. And luckily, we are already meeting these, and most of the additional requirements are involving the public. And we do have some public members on our council, and also the website lists also the Wellness Policy, and great handouts for teachers for alternatives to food as a reward, and alternatives for parties in the classroom, different kinds of foods to have. So with that, what I wanna talk about tonight mostly is how we determine if we are in compliance with the policy. I'm supported by a steering committee with Dr. Paul Cronshaw, who's a teacher here at La Cuesta Continuation High School, Rose Linehan, who is a representative of the Sansom Diabetes Research Institute, and she's stationed at Santa Barbara High School and runs the club called Ready to Move. And also Nancy Weiss, our own Food Services Director, is part of the steering committee. And I apologize that the picture didn't come out, but it was our great SPUSD logo there. Okay, so the Wellness Policy Assessment consists of 33 items in six different categories, and those are the categories listed there. I won't read through them. But in order to determine compliance, I look at these 33 items that each school site fills out the survey, and I note whether they say yes or no that they're meeting each of those items. And it's kind of unreliable statistics, because if you have a new representative for the school site, they might feel like, "No, we're not meeting that 100 percent," so they might check no. Whereas the year before, the person that was the rep might have checked yes, that we are meeting it. So take the results kind of with a grain of salt. Overall, I think we're doing fairly well. So here's a little graph showing our progress. So in May of 2012, we were roughly 85, 87 percent compliance. This year, we're up past 90. So what I see changing is awareness, and the more the teachers and the staff at school sites are aware of the policy, the more things get done. And so I think that's really what has made the difference, is our representatives from our school sites actually bringing this to their principals and to their other staff members and saying, "Wait, you can't have cupcakes today. You have to bring the students carrots and granola," or things that meet the Wellness Policy. So the awareness of the policy and what's in it is really getting more and more prevalent.
I have a question about this slide. What is, what attributes the decline between May 12 and January 13?
What I saw at my own school site is vending machines. And we were doing well with having just water in our vending machines, and the display front was not Gatorade, it was water. But then a couple of vending machines snuck on campus, and we're addressing that now to get them back to just water and get the Gatorade out of the vending machines. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, so why, where are we not complying? What I did is I tallied how many non-compliances we saw, or the ones that came up the most. And so the first one, this had four school sites saying, "We weren't doing this." But then again, some of them say, "We're doing it 50/50." So is that a yes or is that a no? 50 percent? I don't know. I guess in math, that would be a yes if you round up, but I counted them as no's, that we weren't meeting it. So four schools said, "We were not addressing food served at class parties and other celebrations." Physical activity opportunities provided for school staff. Some school sites are actually doing this. They're doing zumba, they're doing yoga, but five school sites said that they were not meeting this. And then the last one is addressing an on-campus plan for implementation of the Wellness Policy, including a group responsible. And I think those last words are where we are non-compliant. We have representatives on the Wellness Council from all but four school sites. I think where we're falling short is having a group responsible. So there's a single person, but they can't do it all. So we're working toward that. And many of the school sites that listed these as non-compliances also listed them as goals for 1314. So when I stand here next year, hopefully, we'll have fewer of those in this list. So now the good stuff. We have Wellness Day every year. This is the third year that we've had Wellness Day. It takes place in March, because that's National Nutrition Month. And some school sites are actually doing a whole week of wellness, like Santa Barbara High School. But this one, I thought, was really fun. This is starting with the kindergarteners. And this is Officer Reyes from the Santa Barbara Police Department, and it looks like a safety meeting, but it's not. He put together an obstacle course for them. And I just love this picture, 'cause I love the expression on their faces, looking up at this big, mean-looking guy, but he's not really that mean. So there were some great other pictures that were action shots of the little kids jumping off of, you know, cushions and things like that. So they had a lot of fun at Harding. And we had, I believe, 12 schools reported at our last Wellness Council meeting about what their activities were for Wellness Day. So these are just a few that I'm sharing with you tonight. Santa Barbara Community Academy had relay races. This is a very popular display called Rethink Your Drink, and so Galita Valley Junior High put this display together, and it shows how much sugar is in a drink. Other schools actually did the same display, and it's sort of a great visual, because you don't really realize how much sugar you're drinking in a can of soda or even a Gatorade. And so to have that much sugar in a little bag or some kind of container next to the drink is kind of an eye-opener, that you really shouldn't be drinking as much of that drink water. And then here is one of the items from the Week of Wellness at Santa Barbara High. They had a poster contest, and this was their first-place winner. They also had things like the Fruit Fear Factor, and had these big, burly athletes that come up and wanna try a star fruit or passion fruit, and it looks weird, but they try it anyway. So that's just kind of the fun things that they do at Santa Barbara High School. And for next year, we'd like to continue meeting three times a year, October, January, and March. We'd like to continue Wellness Day, and we'd also like to look at revising our assessment survey, looking at things like, these things that we're checking no, that we're providing activities for staff, physical activity for staff, is that really feasible? And so we'd kind of like to relook at what's on that assessment survey and decide, should it go, or should we pull in something else from the policy itself? So that concludes my presentation. You'll find, by the way, at your break, a little gift between myself and Susan Horn from Public Health, but make sure to wash the berries before you eat them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Great job, as usual. Thank you so much for your work. Thank you, Susan, as well.
Board, any comments or questions?
I'll make a comment based, I've been involved with the committee, I think, since I've been on the Board as a liaison, and it's amazing to me to see this room filled when a committee meets, and the dialogue, I mean, it's just, you can't get a word in edgewise, everybody's talking. And I've never seen that involvement at a committee level like that, also in tune with what's going on. Very well done. I do know that at the last meeting, Margaret had a slideshow, one of them was dealing with administrative staff and wellness. And I think I recommended the two of you get together, because the staffers is more important than the students in some cases, by just by being the right model for the students. So I think the two of you can work together and get something done.
Okay. Well, thank you again.
And I have a question. And Dr. Cash, do our insurance provider work with us to incentivize any health or wellness? I know that other, at UCSB, there's a big push to try to do, you know, there's like the Walk Day and the Bike Day and all that good stuff.
We don't have specific days, but they do have a survey on their website that they actually give you money on your car, you know, like a Visa card or whatever, to help you go through and find out where you need to do changes in your diet and exercise and things like that. But we will have gyms here on Open Enrollment Day for, you know, with discount memberships and things like that.
All right, thank you. Well, thank you. Next, we are moving on to second reading of CSCH, Chapter 37, Collective Bargaining Proposal for 2013, 2014. Dr. Cash?
Yeah, this is just, as you know, you can't comment on it, it's just, I'm sure you read it, and there's really nothing else to do, or required to sunshine it twice.
All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then we will move on to discussion regarding the funding from the State Education Protection Account for fiscal year 2012, 2013. Mr. Tadasch, I say Tadashi, Tedeschi.
Gotta go with the Italian pronunciation. Tedeschi.
Tedeschi, okay. I'm gonna have to practice this. Now you're gonna see me do this.
Okay. Well, we're here with more fun and exciting news from the state regarding funding and how everything is changing, and there's so much that's going on, and we're having to try to keep up, you know, with all of these changes and the requirements that are associated with them. So we bring this to you as a conference item tonight to discuss, to kind of expose you to the new Education Protection Account, which, of course, they use the acronym EPA, which I believe, I've said Environmental Protection Agency probably the first four times I saw EPA, but no, it's the Education Protection Account. And this came about as a result of the Proposition 30 that was passed back in November, that every school business official in the state of California provided a big sigh of relief on the passing of that proposition, which increased personal income taxes for seven years, as well as the sales and use tax for a quarter percent for four years. And so the big thing about that is, had that not failed, and we discussed this, had that not passed, we would've had to make cuts upwards of $441 per ADA, which could've been up to $6 million for this district. So what Proposition 30 provides is funding to help us avoid those cuts. You know, there's some perception that this funding, which is being made into this Education Protection Account, is providing huge amounts of additional money for school districts, but the reality is, is that it's keeping us from having to make serious, deep, deep cuts. It's expected to generate between $6 and $9 billion in revenue annually over the next seven years. And all the money that's collected from those taxes are deposited into this Education Protection Account. I still have to make sure I don't say environmental. Education Protection Account, where it has to be kept separate at the state level, which is then, when it's given to the school districts, on the district level, we have a separate resource code that we're also supposed to track it separately. This Education Protection Account added Article 13, Section 36, to the California Constitution, which not only impacts the cash flow patterns of the school districts, but it does, of course, come with accountability component. So the proposition provides that all K-14 local agencies have the sole authority to determine how the funds received from the EPA are spent, but with the following provisions. The spending plan must be approved by the governing board during a public meeting, which is, we're just like this, EPA funds cannot be used for the salaries or benefits of administrators or any other administrative costs determined through the account code structure. And each year, the local agency must publish on its website an accounting of how much money was received from the EPA and how the funds are expended. So this year, we haven't received any money yet, but we, Meg and I have gone through the calculations, and we believe we know how much we will receive, which is in some of the materials that you have, we expect to receive about two, a little over $2.7 million. And the plan to spend that $2.7 million is entirely on instructional teacher salaries and benefits, as you see in the attachment. And another one of the requirements is to have the spending plan posted on the website for public to see all throughout the year. And so, of course, they didn't really provide us with a lot of direct guidance as far as format or, and wording of things, but this is what I came up with, with some of the models that I was able to look at. And you'll see, as we kind of, as we scroll through it, you've got the different functions there, and you'll see we've got it all in instruction, salaries and benefits, all $2.7 million. And so that is kind of the plan for this year. And for next year, I believe we can have it as a part of the adopted budget process, the how we plan to spend this money. You'll see that in the adopted budget process that we bring to you June 25th, I believe. So for this year, because it just started in 2013, we're gonna get the one payment in June, and I'll, of course, I'll believe it when I see it, as far as how much it is. We think we know how much we're gonna get, this is the plan. But going into next year, it's gonna be built in as part of the revenue limit, as a way to guarantee the funding of your state aid portion of the revenue limit. And basically, they're guaranteeing a minimum of $200 per ADA for every school district to apply toward the revenue limit. So it's not like it's going to be additional money on top of our revenue limit, it's just going to be used to kind of guarantee the funding of the revenue limit, the state aid portion of the revenue limit. And in 2013, 14, it's supposed to be apportioned on a quarterly basis. We're supposed to get some, you know, each quarter, they're supposed to, based on our revenue limit, kind of split it in quarters, and we'll see, again, how long that lasts and how much we get. Yeah, I hate to be kind of pessimistic about it, but there's so much still up in the air with what we're gonna end up with as far as our funding model for next year, where, you know, Meg and I have planned, you know, 14 different scenarios as far as what we're gonna end up for next year. So we'll have it all laid out for you once we get into the May revise and bring it to you in June for the adopted budget. So there's also, of course, an annual audit to verify, it's gonna be part of our annual audit with our external auditors, to verify how we're spending the money. So...
I wanted to just point out two important facts from Mr. Tedeschi's presentation. One is the recognition that the proposed cuts were in excess of $6 million. Prop 30 is bringing in $2.7 million. 100 percent of that is being spent on teachers we would've had to lay off if Prop 30 would not have passed. I think that's really important for the community to understand, that this is not a... I think that's really important for the community to understand, that this is not additional money to teachers, it's money for teachers that wouldn't have jobs. Who would have much larger class sizes, fewer days of instruction. All of those things would have had to have been implanted, implemented if Prop 30 had not passed. So I think that's important.
Yes, and this goes on for, you know, the seven years, after four years, the sales tax sunsets. So beyond that, you know, what's the plan after that? You know, we can only look a couple months at a time, let alone years.
Ms. Parker?
Yes, I just wanted to be sure, Dr. Cash, I appreciate the clarification because I don't want the public to misunderstand. I mean, we were going to have five fewer days of instruction. And this, when we say it's going to teacher salaries and benefits, it's about direct instruction for students. This is to benefit students. Students would have had a shorter school year. And so I am so grateful to the community for passing this, to the state for passing this. And it's great that we have this accountability measure. I would suggest for 12-13 that we, that we add a sentence or two that lays out what Dr. Cash has said, just to make sure that it's clear to the public that this is, you know, that this is offsetting all these things that we had said, you know. We adopt our budget, you know, June of the previous year, essentially, before the school year starts, and we were ready to implement all these things. So I think it's important for the public to understand that.
Will do.
Mr. Herron?
Can you put the resolution up?
Sure.
I don't quite understand the resolution compared to what you, you just informed us of. To me, the resolution says before June 30th of each year, the state will determine how much we're entitled to and give it to us 10 days before the end of the year for next fiscal year. And so I'm confused with the money we're getting before the end of June. Is that for this 12-13 or is it for the next fiscal year? And then it talks about every year that takes place. If there's enough money, they allocate it. So does that mean we're going to go the entire year next year, waiting until 10 days before the end of the year to see if we get this million?
Meg, do you have it? I mean, that's about how it usually goes. You know, I think they have an idea at the state level as far as what they're going to come in, but it's not until they actually see it. And that's how we end up trying to catch up with things at the end of the year.
This EPA, this Education Protection Action was part of 22% of what we were going to get in state aid. So they held on to this to find out, I believe, to find out how much money they're going to get on April 15th. And they said way back when, when Prop 30 was passed, that they were going to hold this chunk of money until June 20th. Then in 13-14, as Conrad said, that there will be quarterly distributions of this money. But for 12-13, it's on, we're supposed to have it on June 20th.
I guess my question, that's not what the resolution says. I'm just curious, is this the right resolution? It talks about getting money 10 days before the end of the year for the next fiscal year. It doesn't say anything about a quarterly payment. This says...
Well, we have to, we have to bring this every year. And so this is just for this year.
But it's, but it's talked about for the next fiscal year. It doesn't say you're going to get it by the end of June for this year. It says end of June for next year.
Where did the resolution language come from?
The County Office of Education. Those are drafts. No, I definitely understand what you're saying.
Like before, it comes back as a real one, I'd like to have that clarified.
And this is the...
If the way it is written is logical, because you'll know in June what you're going to have next year to spend. The way it's being described, we'll know in June what we had to spend this year, and if we spend it and don't get it, we're in trouble.
I think that's only for this year, as opposed to for the years to come.
We should ask...
Because we didn't know what the revenues would be until mid-April.
Okay. But if we get it 10 days before the end of June for this year, according to the resolution, we don't get any more money until next June.
Well, that's not, that's not what, what we should be, only be doing the resolution for is 12-13.
It's for the year we're in.
So we'll clarify that in the next resolution.
Any additional questions or comments, Board? All right. I think we're good, and we have some suggestions for the next time it comes back to the Board. Thank you. We are moving on to first reading of selected Board policies and administrative regulations in the zero series concerning charter schools.
Specifically, excuse me, the three, well, first, one's an AR, another, and the other two are BPs, but they speak directly to the establishment renewal and revocation of charter schools. And more clearly delineate what the criteria should be for establishing, renewing, and revoking charter schools. Back in 2010, the CDE was awarded a grant from Department of Education. It was a five-year grant. Then, I believe, later that year in 2010, the CDE was informed that they didn't include specific language to these particular areas of establishing, renewing, and revoking charter schools that specifically spoke to student achievement, particularly school-wide and as we do with our current NCLB, to every single significant group within a charter school. So in 2011, the state of California finally relented in the language because they were trying to negotiate a deal with the Department of Education and decided to come forward with language that, again, clearly states that when we're establishing, renewing, or revoking a charter school, that we look specifically at the academic achievement of school-wide and numerically significant student subgroups.
Thank you, Mr. Handel. Board, should we take one, one either administrative hearing or Board policy at a time, or would you like to just talk about this collectively? Ms. Parker?
Well, I think I have one general question before we go into any specifics, and that is, we get these as CSBA sample policies, and especially with a, with a Board policy like this, I mean, I would love to go in here and make changes and suggest different things, but I don't know, you know, I look at this and think this is pretty much all et code. And I don't see, I mean, there may be some minor language tweaking that I can do, but I, I'm assuming that what I'm seeing here is pretty much dead on the template, that there's, that there was no change or any dramatic changes made, unless you can tell me otherwise.
Hundred percent correct.
Okay. So, so in many ways, I just want to be clear that our hands are tied on this one. This is not something that's locally controlled.
That's correct.
Mr. Herron?
Just in general, do these changes make it harder to get a renewal or easier to get a renewal or just more clear cut on how to get a renewal?
It's more clear cut. So when we're looking at renewing a charter, we're going to be looking at what, the way I read it from Senate Bill 1290, specifically states if a charter school does not hit all of their subgroups' target API for two out of the last three years, then we can not renew or revoke a charter school. A charter, excuse me.
And that's the choice of the Board as opposed to et code that requires us to revoke?
That's correct.
Any other comments or questions?
We'll bring them back then for action. Should, can we place them on the consent agenda?
I believe so.
Will do.
Thank you. All right, next we have the presentation on the Dos Pueblos High School Stadium Master Plan and Allocation of Measure Q Bond Funds for Phase 1 Matching Contribution.
Thank you very much, Madam President. We have, it looks like a few people here from Dos Pueblos High School, as well as one of our great architects, Joe Wilcox. I'm going to let David Hetjung get us started.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Members of the Board, once again, you see me up here when people talk about matching funds to enhance projects. First of all, I want to make one correction on my agenda item. It is the Dos Pueblos High School Charger Associates, not Association. So that was an error on my part in preparing this item. But the Charger Associates have been developing a master plan, a five-phase master plan, of which Phase 1 is to resurface the track and change the field from natural grass to artificial turf, much along the same lines and products as was used at San Marcos High School. Basically, be a comparable type system on both the track and the field. All the track would remain black, I believe, instead of the red. I don't think you can talk Dos Pueblos into a red track. Phase 2, I just want to mention briefly, in the press box phase, there is a commitment from Republic Elevator to donate the elevator components. And like I say, this, the schematic designs have been complete, work on some of the designs to ensure the feasibility are complete. Have here the principal from Dos Pueblos, Athletic Director, and Joe Wilcox is part of the design team that's been employed by Charger Associates, Charger Associates for this project. So let me turn it over to Sean, first of all. Or should I ask Sean, are you first? Okay.
I'm not as tall as Mr. Hetjung. There we go. Good evening, Madam President, and members of the Board, and Dr. Cash, Mr. Handel, Ms. Jete. Yes, I, you know me, I'm the principal of Dos Pueblos High School, and as DP's principal, I don't need to remind you about how often DP is in the news, many times in recent weeks, even tonight at the 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock news for our first-place hacking team. And for the place that we have in the, in the community with our academic, extracurricular, artistic, and athletic achievements, we are putting this proposal before you because we believe that Dos Pueblos is, it is not only a very reasonable and strategic, but also a very appropriate request for us to be making in terms of seeking and pursuing actively facilities upgrades that will be commensurate with the excellence of the institution that we all represent. So I'm going to introduce who I've brought with me here today. I'm going to make a few overview remarks, and then we'll welcome any questions that you have, and some of the folks behind me might be a better answer to, better able to address some of them than I might be able to. I've got Athletic Director Dan Feldhouse here with me. I also have, you'll be hearing from Joe Wilcox, who's here from KBZ. I also have Larry Vanish here, who's a designee that I use, has worked on a lot of the details involved with the planning of this project. Athletic Director Dan Feldhouse also served as the PE Department Chair for years at Dos Pueblos and can speak from the perspective of the PE Department and a classroom teacher at Dos Pueblos. So at DP, as you may already know, we spent over 40 years without a stadium at all. We only began having home football games there in the last handful of years. Now that we do have a Leary Stadium, and we're pleased to have it, we are faced sometimes with a dilemma of having the field be overused and in poor condition even before the fall football season starts. We are pursuing this turf field and track resurfacing, number one, for safety and liability issues. We do have problems with pest control. We dedicate lots of human resources to managing that problem. And we do have a field, as we say, concretes out in the winter season with soccer. It becomes a very hard-playing surface, and we are concerned about athletic injuries, particularly head injuries. We believe that the turf field will be environmentally superior. We know that it will be in terms of upkeep, in terms of water uses, usage, and as I've already referred to, in terms of pest control. We know that it will improve access and access, if you talk to Ed Behrens, I'm confident I can offer his cooperation in terms of speaking to the expanded use that their facility enjoys from members of the community through the civic use permit process. And of course, we would be mindful to always stay within our mitigated negative declarations that we've established for our stadium to date. Again, Mr. Feldhouse is here and can speak to how we expect not only improved services to our student athletes, student athletes comprise over half the students at Dos Pueblos, so over 1,000 of our students, but also we anticipate the PE Department being able to make, make better use of the existing facilities we have with these upgrades. Currently, the PE Department doesn't access the field in the spring, cannot access the field when there's been any rain. We have to stay off the field to keep it in good condition for our varsity-level athletic programs. If we don't do that, then it can't be played on. We also anticipate that it would provide a broader school-wide use for programs other than athletics and PE, so for marching band, for events like graduation, and even just for classroom events. We sometimes have science teachers who do need larger spaces for experiments and demonstrations. Overall, we believe that this is something that we can really shift, especially at Dos Pueblos, especially given Dos Pueblos's place in the Galita community, that we can transform from what it is currently, which is a revenue and resource drainer, to a profit generator. And again, that's through significantly reduced irrigation, the ability to divert human resources away from the laborious task of upkeeping the current grass field, the materials that we currently dedicate, dedicate to maintaining the current grass field. And we also believe in the latter phases of the project, that through the expanded civic use permit process and the creation, the building of a formal entrance plaza, that we would actually see increases in both gate revenue and concessions revenue. So again, as Mr. Hetjung referenced, this is Phase 1 of a master plan that has undergone careful consideration and meticulous planning. We have over $200,000 of this money raised already through, which demonstrates a grassroots commitment on the part of the community that supports Dos Pueblos. And we firmly believe that, that the Board endorsement of these matching funds will send a message and will launch this capital campaign to a, to a new level, and that we would be able to generate the necessary funds to match what it is that we're requesting tonight. So at this point, unless you have questions for me, and you can certainly ask them now or later, I'd like to introduce somebody you already know well, I believe, Joe Wilcox.
Thank you, Sean. Members of the Board, Dr. Cash, if we could put up a graphic. I've been asked by the Dos Pueblos Chargers Associates to kind of show you what we've been, what we've put together over the last several months, probably six to eight months, evening meetings with all the various parent groups showing up and lots of fun with that group. But just to get you oriented to this site, this is north, this is south, this is the visitor's side. Bleachers existing, this is the home side, bleachers existing. And Phase 1, as David Hetjung mentioned, would be the redoing the field, like he did at San Marcos High School, and redoing the track. Phase 2 would be to be, to do this new press box, which you don't have a press box right now. Phase 3 would be a visitor's side, and there are more graphics which I'll go through. A visitor's side, concession stand, restrooms, janitor's area, storage area, and because of the topography, there would have to be some stairs down to this baseball field on the east side. And then one of the final phases is to do a Charger Plaza, they're calling it right now, or Leary Plaza, where there'll be a new ticket booth. Excuse me, that's Phase 4, ticket booth, a classroom building that can be divided into two spaces that can be used for several multi-functions like team rooms, films, and so on, and then a concession stand. In this plan, they wanted to keep the existing restroom building. And the building on the back burner is some sort of a storage facility that has not been designed. There are lots of debates on where this building should go, so it's kind of the, the end of the story, depending on funding. We talked about tucking it into this bleacher, but code analysis, since this is an assembly space, would really increase the cost of this building for fireproofing and such, and then it would also affect the, the design of the, the press box. Can we go to the next slide? And please interrupt me at any time. So we just have some very simple 3D graphics. This would be the plaza. This is the new building that has the classroom building and the concession stand and the new walkway up with the ticket booth. It's a little out of focus, I guess. I need my glasses. This is the press box, and you'll see a close-up of the press box. We spent a lot of time designing the press box. It's not going to just be a used bus up on stilts. The associates wanted to make sure that it was going to be very nice for the, for the campus. And then this would be the visitor's side. We actually went out and measured where the, actually the light poles are, so we didn't, you know, a year or so from now, get out there and say, wait a minute, the light poles are in the way. And then this is the building that I'm calling the storage building that is still kind of in flux, for lack of a better term. Next slide, please. This is an aerial view from the other side, looking, again, here's the visitors, these are the stairs down to the baseball diamond because of the topography. This is the unknown building right now. This is the press box again, and so on with the home side concessions and team rooms. Next slide. press boxes that the parents had seen at various high schools, and the roof is accessible for filming, has an elevator, which is, as David says, is being donated. This is the plan of the concession area off of the O'Leary Plaza and the O'Leary Rock, some storage, and then the classroom building. That existing restroom is right here. If funds are available, I think it'd be a great idea to incorporate that in the building, but right now, this is not part of the, part of the package. And then this is the visitor's side. Do I have any more, or that is? That's it. Okay. Thank you.
Let me just mention one other factor. Sean mentioned control of pests. At, at Dos Pueblos High School, we have very expansive soils, meaning when the soils get wet from rain and dry out, they really contract and expand. Then you have all the gopher and squirrel holes, which gets additional water down in around that track, and that exacerbates the problem. And when they built that stadium, they didn't excavate all the soil they should have, and it's been a challenge over the years to keep that concrete ribbon around that track in place, and we've had numerous remediation efforts. And so, just the elimination of the irrigation on that field will help tremendously in preserving that asset.
I guess I'm going to wear two hats on, on my comments, I guess. I've been to a lot of high schools, and the proposal that we're bringing on would make, with the, you know, going through all five phases, would make Dos Pueblos one of the best athletic facilities. We already are in a lot of ways. Our school's pretty amazing. We have probably the best aquatics facility in probably the whole Central Coast, and this idea is bringing us up to par with what our campus already is. Our school's amazing, and this is what we're trying to bring this up to those standards as well. So we really feel that, not only from the way it looks, but the way it performs, but we also, from an athletic point of view, I think this would be great for providing year-round access, access to all of our athletes. We have to close our field quite a bit. We have a lot of issues. We got a lot of, our gardeners put a lot of time in our field, and to get it game-ready, to get it ready for students to use, and we feel that, well, I can talk to Abe Jotome at San Marcos, their field is used quite a bit, much to the benefit of their athletes. Now, flipping hats here, I was the PE Department Chair at Dos Pueblos for, must have been six years, and when I was teaching PE, we did not have great facilities, places to take our classes, to do team sports, such as soccer, such as whatever we were doing on the field. This is a classroom. I would have loved to have had access to a, a field like this, that I can use. When it's a little foggy outside, it's not going to be slippery or unsafe for the students, and it gets foggy out there quite a bit. So as a, from a former teacher's perspective, this would be a home run for the PE Department, to have another facility for them to, to use for their students, periods one through five, or one through six, actually. I lost my train of thought, sorry. So, yes, I guess, thank you so much for considering our proposal. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just, my colleagues have done an excellent job with this presentation, and draw it back to the main thrust, would be we at the school are asking you, as a Board, to become capital partners with us on Phase One, which, as you have heard, would develop the track and the field. And I think we cannot underestimate the time and circumstance that have been put into raising money already, and equally, the, we feel strongly that with the Board as a partner, you are a major player in the, in the, in the capital campaign. It shows a readiness, it shows an interest in the students. We've been able to function with Musco Lighting, which was part of a earlier bond project. We've been able to function nicely, weather permitting. We've been able to operate successfully under the negative deck, both with lighting and compliance to conform to the needs and interests of the community, surrounding community, the residents, and also with sound. So what we feel we're doing with the surface area is, is upgrading in Phase One, all of that to be comparable with the other. The value of seeing the whole footprint, which is why many of us pushed for that, is to understand that if Phase One existed for a long time as the only part that was done, at least it doesn't appear, if you will, to be a willy-nilly project that was thrown out with no other thought or involvement to the stadium. So really, we all would like you to give this careful consideration for the students and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Board, Dr. Bass?
What is, beyond Phase One, what is the tentative timeline for Phases Two through Five at this point?
I think that the, the group is hopeful that Phase One would take place next summer, and then depending on fundraising, fundraising, they would plan the, the subsequent phases would all be subject to their, their success at fundraising. If I answer any of these incorrectly, please let me know.
I just wanted to comment on my, on my side, that I was a student athlete at Dos Pueblos when I was there, both in football and track, and know the space very well, and know that it probably hasn't changed very much, in terms of that, and knew the experience of being a student athlete, especially in football, not even playing in my own school. So that is, you know, we're talking about parity issues here on campus and at DP, and having experienced, having played at San Marcos and then at UCSB at the time that I was there. I think this would be a significant, for my part, a significant step in the right direction for at least the student athletes feeling they have a place they can call home.
Ms. Parker, then Ms. Idelson.
I have a couple of questions. First is, are there, is there an estimated cost for the entire master plan, or just for this first stadium?
The entire master plan is probably around three and a half million dollars.
Okay. I'm going to piggyback on Dr. Paz with the parity piece, and I think it's fantastic, and I, and I really would like to go ahead with this for Dos Pueblos. It's so interesting to me, you know, we've already had San Marcos essentially move forward with the, with the track renovation piece. We're sitting here also with major work needed at Peabody Stadium at Santa Barbara High School. And what I struggle with is, I, I sometimes feel that as a Board and as a district, we don't, we don't think about equity issues when it's like, this parent group says that they're going to fundraise for, for landscaping or facilities, and, but then the district's going to pay for it at this site, and, and they're never, you know, it's wonderful when parent groups come forward, but then how do you address it when you just, I mean, I want our students to all, at all of our high schools, to have the, you know, equivalent facilities. I don't want to, I don't want to essentially penalize Dos Pueblos by saying, yes, fundraise now, and then three years from now, well, then we'll, we'll just pay for it at this other high school. And so, and I know San Marcos, obviously, they did the fundraising for their field. I just, I just want to be sure that we're thinking about all of that as we, as we try to move forward and be fair to the, to the community at each high school. I want the students to have it, but I also don't want to say, you're going to pay for it at this high school, but we're going to provide it at that high school.
Ms. Idelson?
Yes, I have a question about the, both longevity of the material of the track and what the, you know, the balance of going from to artificial turf versus natural. I mean, it sounds like at San Marcos, this is working well. You talk about the expansive soil, and this would help that in that way, and drainage. Is there a time at which, you know, moving in this direction is of great benefit, and when does that occur? I mean, as far as, I can appreciate the use of it, it's, you know, I'm sure engineered so that, you know, it's a great track to run on, bouncy and whatever, but.
The immediate benefits to, to time savings for the school, and, and cost-wise, would be not having to water the field. The field does have a drainage system in it where water percolates through the turf into the drainage system, and it's taken away from the seal, field. You don't have to fertilize the field, which takes time. You don't have to aerate the field. The, the grounds people don't have, or the coaches, whoever does at that site, doesn't have to go out and line the field each time for a game, and just the sprinkler head maintenance and things like that are the immediate benefit. The long-term cost is that, what do we, I'm trying to remember what the estimate was, in number of years, maybe you can help me at San Marcos, ten years?
Ten years.
In ten years, you're going to need to replace certain sections of that field that have more wear and tear than others. At the San Marcos field, we had two seams come loose, and the time it's been there, separated where the logo was, the manufacturer came out, fixed it, haven't heard anything negative for that. We did enter into a contract, a maintenance contract, with the manufacturer for five years, to come in twice a year to run the, what I call it, kind of like the Zamboni machine that they use on ice hockey. It takes all the rubber out, cleans it, and puts it back in a uniform manner to keep that field in good shape. They recommend doing that. So, so we do, we're doing those things to try and, and lengthen the longevity in the field. They say a track should be resurfaced every five years. I mean, we've gone seven, eight, nine, some cases even longer, without resurfacing a track. It may have needed it seven, but maybe we didn't have the money to do it till eight or nine. We are putting aside money for, for this purpose, as we started a fund with the Civic Center Use Money going in, part of that going into a fund to, to set aside, because we know there's going to be a time when, just like a gym floor replacement with deferred, with maintenance money, I don't think we can use deferred maintenance money on a turf field, and you can't use deferred maintenance money to replaster a pool. Well, athletic facilities do require rehabilitation every 10 years or so. Figure 10 years, you replaster a pool, 10 years, you're going to replace part of a artificial turf field. We resurface our gym floors every other year. We do half of them one year, half of them the next, which is the sanding and the resealing. And the Santa Barbara High School floor, I'm not sure how long it's been in place, but we're finally now replacing that floor, and that was in a, a floor, I don't know how many years that was there, was it the original floor, Joe? It's the original floor. And so through, through careful care, that floor lasted, you know, quite a long time, and we hope that the ones that we've put on other schools would also do that, so. And we've had discussions with the Board about coming back with maintenance and deferred maintenance plans and setting aside the money. So yes, there is a cost after placing that field to, to maintain it and to eventually rehabilitate it. But in my mind, as a facilities person, the fact that the school can use that field, and it doesn't become something that's a mud field, a hard-caked field that sits there with nobody being able to use it, it lets us utilize our facilities, but yes, there's a price for that.
Thank you.
Dr. Bass?
On the, the track surface, is it, it's a rubberized surface. I'm thinking it's more like, I haven't been to San Marcos, but is it more like a City College's track or UCSB's track that they have?
It's a permeable surface. It's, I think right now, Dos Pueblos and San Marcos have the same surface, it's just a different color, and we're going back with, with resurfacing with the same type of surface.
There's another question for that. Are you planning to try to mitigate sort of the use of the inside of the track in some way as you move forward in the project?
A lot of times, we put up signage. Some, some schools will set a barrier out where, where it makes it difficult for joggers to always jog on the inside two lanes, so the outside lanes get more wear and tear. There's different ways to accomplish that without putting a swinging gate out there that's, that's ugly metal that tends to get vandalized or, or tried to turn around. But a lot of times, between signage and placing a temporary barrier, most of the community that jogs on the weekends, uses that type of use, will, will jog in the other lanes, and then during the school day, you have coaches out there that can control, you know, if you're going to go out and run and jog, you know, don't use the first two or three lanes, use the outside lanes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Herron?
Couple of questions. This matching fund and this proposal is part of the current bond funding, correct? It made the first list. It's a, how to use existing bond money?
It, it made it as a placeholder, not as a board approval.
But it's on, if we approve it, it's coming out of that basic set of money, not the sale of new bonds?
Correct.
In the sale of new bonds, I forget, do we have Phase One, Phase Two, Three, Four, or Five in very, any place?
No, we do not.
Okay, I just want to make, yeah. I'm, I'm concerned with this equality, same with Mrs. Parker. You know, San Marcos, it's great to talk about fairness and equity, but they paid for it. And so, there is this fairness issue of, sure, we want, we want equal fields, but I get stuck on, you know, the Matt Academy was 100%, the, almost 100%. I think the last 500,000 is coming from developer fees or thereabouts. The Engineering Academy was 100% raised, the San Marcos was 100%. We've had a history of, of these types of things being done by fundraising. Now, I was happy when I went back in 2010 and found what we voted on for priority on the bond mons, money, and one of the high priorities was matching fund projects. So we planned in 2010 to use the bond money to some degree for this type of thing. So I'm satisfied with that. But AR 7215 has a whole series of requirements for this type of project in the way of fundraising, spelling out what the fundraising is, having 75% in the bank before we start, or break ground, I guess. Are all of those requirements in 7215 going to be brought before us?
I think the first thing we would need to do is come back at the next meeting with a formal request to fundraise with the name of the district, and we would ask this group to abide by our administrative regulation that's in place, and if they wanted to vary from that, they'd have to come to the Board, just like Santa Barbara High School did with their matching fund portion, or their portion of what they're paying for, asking for not to change the ratios, but asking for a little bit more time because the dollar amount came in higher than expected.
That's my question. Before we vote on this, we'll get everything required in 7215 in front of us as part of the package?
What you're voting for is, is to set aside and commit the money, provided that the fundraisers raise the rest of the money of what is needed, and, and then typically prior, prior to going out to advertisement, I think the, I haven't reviewed the AR, but I think it says, prior to going out to advertising the project, they have to have 75% in the bank, and if they don't have 100%, we always come before the Board every time that I can remember, and, and they give a plan as to how they're going to fundraise the remaining amount and the timeline, so you're comfortable with that when you finally approve the project. But this is, this is a, this would be a commitment of the money, not an authorization to spend it. Okay. In accordance with AR 7215? Absolutely.
And I have some follow-up questions. First, it says the recommendation is to allocate $650,000, but then it says the fiscal impact is $625,000. Where is the $25,000 difference?
One of those is an incorrect figure.
Which one is incorrect? 625 is the correct?
625 is correct.
Okay. And then the other piece is, I mean, this keeps coming up over and over, and I don't, I'm at a loss as to how to address this. This isn't, but it's the piece of the fundraising and the match, and we've had, this, this comment has been made multiple times for multiple years, and I am really at a loss on how to address this, because the parity issue isn't just facility to facility, I think it's greater. And I need direction from you, Dr. Cash, on how this Board is going to address it. How are we going to think about this in the future? Because I feel every time it comes up, it's when there's an item in front of us to either provide direction for or to vote on, and that's probably not the best time for this conversation to come to us. So I'd like to figure out how we're going to think about this. Do we need to leave our policies or ARs as is, or do we need to amend them? Do we need to have some overarching direction? I really don't know. But that's a problem for me. The other piece is- Do we need to leave our policies or ARs as is, or do we need to amend them? Do we need to have some overarching direction? I, I really don't know. Um, but that's a problem for me. Um, the other piece is, what's the expected total match from the Dos Pueblos community side for the total project? So, I heard that it's 225 for twenty, 200, 200-something right now for phase one?
For phase one, the phase one cost estimate is, uh, 1,250,000, I believe, and Joe can correct me if I'm wrong. The total estimate for all of the phases is three and a half million. Uh, the Charger fundraiser are asking for a commitment of 625,000, and if-
For phase one or for-
For, for phase one.
Okay, so-
For phase one. There has been no discussion about, um, asking, to my knowledge, there's been no discussion o- other than fundraising, uh, for remaining phases. However, I don't know what, what the fundraising group would request of Dr. Cash or myself of the board. They, they've not, we've not had discussions on that. Uh, I think they, they wanna show that they're very successful with phase one before they evaluate how they're gonna go through with phase two, three, four, and five. And of course, um, at one point, uh, you're getting to providing, uh, facilities are kind of on par, and then at some point in this project, you're, you're providing facilities that are above and beyond what the other schools would have. So, I imagine that would be a major discussion, uh, between all the involved parties.
Okay, so what I mean-
But I'm unable to answer the question at this time.
So, what I'm hearing you say of the $3.5 million project, the match is going to be approximately 625,000?
That's for phase one.
Phase one.
So, what's going to be the goal for the match, for the overall project?
Don't, don't have that.
So, when is that discussion gonna happen with the-
It may, it may- May never happen.
It may never happen?
So, okay, so then it's 625. So, right now, what we have in front of us, it's-
625, we're committing to match.
For phase one, but for the overall project, the request is going to be about 3.5 million.
I don't know about the request, but the, the cost estimate for all five phases is approximately three and a half million.
Three and a half. And the, what, the only thing we anticipate at this moment that we'll get from the Dos Pueblos community is 625,000?
They are committed to matching, i- if it comes in, uh, they're asking for 625,000, that's the way they worded it. They didn't say 50%. I assume the cost estimate's very conservative, so I assume this is our match.
If, if once we approve phase, right, if once we approve phase one, then the district will then pay for the remainder of the-
No, no.
No, no.
No, each of the phases will come before the board with a fundraising proposal from Dos Pueblos.
So, each, so each phase will have some contribution, the amount is unknown?
Correct.
Okay.
Sure.
The, the idea was not to give you, to try to give you a complete picture, which they have done, uh, and with the understanding that, right now, we're only talking about phase one.
Right, but I'm trying to actually put phase one in perspective with the overall project. And so I, I, I don't know how, what the goal is for the other phases, and-
If I might, maybe, we're at phase one now. It's been, uh, the work of many people for about three or four years in a formal turf committee, which has now morphed into the Charger associates. And that money, um, is specifically dedicated, the orig- the 200,000 we have now was raised under the auspices of doing the field and the track. We are here just about the field and the track. Um, many of us thought the value in showing some expanded thinking was that this wouldn't be a, a floating island, if you will, um, cognitively, that it, it, it could conceivably fit in a plan that is not even, uh, other than being drawn and sitting there waiting. The work is the field, the safety requirements are the field and the track, the usages for this field and the track. Yes, it would be nice eventually to not have to worry about rain with the deal, but we, we would be more than happy to focus with the board on just this one item, just this one, one planned phase one.
I think contextually, it's important to recall that it took 40 years for the Dos Pueblos community to get a field. So, my expectation is, is that they have a ver- they have a very long-term view of the, their ability to get additional improvements to any project that they may have.
Right, and I think that this is more about understanding what we have, 'cause if, the placeholder that was discussed was for 3.5.
No.
No.
1.2.
1.2.
Half, half of the 1.2.
6.2, I mean, 625.
625.
625, but the total project was 1.2.
Got it, okay.
And, and just, uh, uh, Dr. Cash, I don't know if you had left yet or not when the press box came up, uh, at Dos Pueblos High School, just as, 'cause I don't believe any members of the board were on the board when the press box was designed. The press box was designed as part of the stadium expansion, and it was designed without elevator, 'cause an elevator wasn't required at that time if you provided an alternate location for accessibility for filming and other items. It got submitted to DSA. Before it came out of DSA, DSA changed the rules and said, "Now you need an elevator." There wasn't enough money allocated in Measure V for the elevator, so the press box didn't get built. And so ever since that time with this, when the stadium was built, it was built without the elevator for that reason. It was originally designed, didn't require the elevator, there wasn't enough money left to do the elevator, so the bleachers got built without it.
I didn't know that.
And just, just, just so you have that, uh, in perspective, uh, if phase two comes about.
All right. Ms. Parker?
I just wanna touch on what you were talking about with our board policy and administrative regulation that talks about, um, augmenting bond and capital funds, fundraising for that. And I do think that we should maybe have a board subcommittee that meets with Dr. Cash and, uh, Mr. Hetjung to get started on this, to really talk, 'cause I do think we need something a little bit more explicit so that, um, well, we need something a lot more explicit. Uh, it still leaves understanding that there will be some variation, um, across the district, but, um, you know, there's so many times since, even before I was been on the, been on the board, I could look at the Pewatty Library as an example, where it's like you put that money aside as a placeholder. Um, I mean, that led to lots of changes, but just the idea of, you know, we're gonna allow a, a certain community to augment, but then this community can't, and then you have, you know, all sorts of issues around it. Um, and I, I just think that we need to, to think about that and not think about it in, in, uh, on a case-by-case basis, and just, you know, really make our policy, uh, more encompassing of that and understanding of what's going on. So, that's, that would be my proposal, that, that some of us work on this with, um, with administrative staff and then bring something back for the board to look at.
Mr. Herron?
Uh, yeah, I think it's fair to s- to say, and everybody should be aware, uh, we have $300 million or so worth of projects out there. We just issued, uh, voted to issue more bonds that spent, I think, what, $55 million? Uh, the chances of this board having funds available to augment any project of this magnitude in the future is a long ways off. I don't think anybody should have any feeling that all of a sudden this board's gonna come up with a million dollars for something when it's already allocated very tightly, and we have a project development plan that very tightly says what is needed, as I understand it. This is not on that, that plan at all. So, it'd be very hard pressed for me to vote any more money to any project like this that's not on our $300 million capital plan at this moment in time. Now, we can always change that, but I don't think this is the type of project I would change it for. There's too many things else that are just vital to the everyday operations of our schools. I'm gonna go ahead and, I will, when this comes back, I'll vote for it as long as it meets the regulation, 'cause I, I think that we have, um, basically indicated we're gonna do this.
Any additional questions or comments, Board? All right.
I'll bring something back to you for the next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to comment on that last comment. I hope Dos Pueblos brings something back to us, with what they're gonna do and how they're gonna do it. You might be the vehicle to accomplish that, but they better be the ones to put the plan together.
All right. Next, we have, um, the strategic plan update.
Well, um, we have two items to bring forward for your consideration this evening. One is, uh, from action step three, providing continuous learning for our staff, and that's the item 3B, the three-year professional learning plan. And Emilio is gonna do his best Ben Drati imitation as well when he goes through this, 'cause it's a document that the two of them facilitated the creation of.
Okay.
And when we're done with Mr. Handel, then I'll briefly talk about action step one, items IJ and IK.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. So, as, as Dr. Cash has mentioned, um, Dr. Drati and I went through the process of looking at, uh, our strategic plan and looking at all the items, all of the, uh, pieces that were going to require professional learning on behalf of our, of our staff. Um, we pulled them all out, we took a look at each one, um, and we came up with a series of, as you'll see, goals, actions, participants, dates, objectives, products and evidence, and costs and the resources that we're gonna come out of. Um, the big ideas, though, out of this were specifically the implementation of Common Core, um, STEM education, uh, visual and performing arts, 21st century skills integration, CTE, implementation of restorative justice, or also known as RJ, and cultural proficiency. And professional learning communities and pedagogical changes that are going to be required, uh, during this, this really important, uh, next few years. So, as we, as we went through all of this and put it all together, we, we went through the process of sharing it with our principals and various other staff members within the district. Uh, we required our, our principals to go back to their staff and get input from either their leadership team or from their, or from their entire staff. What we have found is, as staff have looked at this particular plan, um, as you'll see, it's, as you can see, it's about a 22-page document right now in draft form. And, uh, there was a lot of time, obviously, and effort and thinking put into this. So, as you look at it, um, please realize that there have been a lot of people that have given their ideas and their thoughts to this. Other pieces that we, we considered were the evaluation piece, and as Dr. Drati and I looked at the plan and, and we had some time to reflect after we thought we had completed, um, the majority of it, and realized, well, how are we gonna evaluate all this? So, that's a piece that we've been kicking some ideas back and forth, and we will, we will put these in and, and put that piece in as we speak to our, our, um, our principals, district administrators, so that we can get a, a good idea of whether or not everything we're trying to do is A, too much, uh, B, um, not effective, or C, not, not efficient, or D, all of the above. But we wanna get a good feedback from our staff, from, from our, our certificated staff of how we're doing, how our principals think we're doing as well. Finally, the resources. Um, for the first year, it's pretty easy because we, you know, we know, can, we have somewhat of an idea of what the costs are gonna be in terms of, you know, the contracts is, uh, the contracts that we have for either, um, folks to come in to give support, or extra time, or sub days, or paying for additional, uh, staff. But years after that, it's a little bit more to, um, it's a little more difficult to project that out, simply because we're not sure after the first year what people are gonna want. Uh, right now, we're just projecting, we may need X, Y, and Z heading into year two and three. Um, and so with the changes, the changing landscape of funding in the state and the changes in the federal categorical funding, it's really hard to tell where that funding's gonna come from and how much we're actually gonna be needing in terms of professional learning. So, with all that said, I can tell you that this, even a, as a 22-page document, is still somewhat in its embryonic stages because we realize we're gonna have to put so much more into it as we go forward. And so at this point, I, I, I would love to hear some feedback from you.
Thank you, Mr. Handel. Ms. Parker?
I think my favorite on the resource list, when it was $300,000, get from Meg. It's like, right on, Mr. J, nice donation.
She's the money lady.
Um, I really feel like, you know, this is a snapshot in time, and, and it's true with the strategic plan in general, um, but the, the, what you've put together here in terms of a plan certainly addresses what I would've thought as the, the key needs for the, the district in professional learning. Um, you know, with the understanding that obviously you'll be fine-tuning, I, I do really agree, uh, and that was one of my concerns, is how much teacher feedback are you gonna get? You know, surveying, did this work, did this not work, what else do we need? Um, because it won't do any good if there's not the teacher buy-in piece. Um, and one question I had was, in terms of the funding, I can see that most of the, or a lot of the funding is federal, um, title money. And, um, there are, besides district training, there are always site needs, site-specific needs for training, and in years past, um, you know, it's, it's, it used to be that a lot of title, you know, one, Title II money was going to the school sites, and, uh, more recently, I think that the district has been pulling that back and, and sort of, uh, you know, spending it centrally for district-wide needs. And so one of my questions is, um, how will this affect any money that's available for, um, school site councils, or even if those things exist in the future, who knows? But if, um, if a school sees that it needs specific, it has specific holes, specific gaps, specific programs that it's bringing forward that aren't being addressed by the district training, will sites have some money to spend on professional development?
Yes, I, but I wanna make it clear that, that sites still receive title money this, in the last two years.
Yes, they do. Yes, less than they used to back in the day.
Well, we all have gotten less than we used to.
But we also can, we can only keep certain amount at the district office. The rest has to go to the sites.
And also, the, the only significant change that I've seen, you know, while being a principal here, now my new position, is that, uh, when I got here, we were able to use Title II funding. I think the district has done a great job of holding those funds so that our district and all of our schools can get on the same page in offering professional development, because it was like the Wild West for a while. Everybody was offering differing, different things according to their site needs and not more in alignment with district goals.
Still will be money, you know, I mean, uh, kinda the core issue is gonna be with LCFF. You know, um, our intent is to maintain the status quo this next year as far as school site allocations for state categorical monies and federal categorical monies as well, um, because we haven't had a thoughtful opportunity to engage in any conversation with the board or the community about how to spend the money differently, if in fact it's allocated differently. Um, and we felt pretty secure in the concept that we would spend this next year if in fact LCFF is implemented, being able to have a conversation and come forward with some recommendations to the board on what we would do differently, if anything, now that we don't have the restrictions of categorical programs. So, but, yeah, we, we, sites still got a lot of money, um, to spend. A lot more than I got when I was a principal, I can tell you that.
Dr. Bass and Mr. Herron?
Just a quick question. Do we ever look at opportunities, I know some of these are done with community groups, you know, as part of the work that they're doing, but do we ever look at other opportunities to look at partnering with other sort of neighboring districts to do, uh, common training, especially as we're moving into Common Core? I'm sure that the needs may be very similar across the school districts.
As, as a matter of fact, the five South County superintendents have met twice and are, were meeting two more times before the end of the year to have a conversation about a consortium in relationship to professional development.
Right, thank you. Mr. Herron?
I noticed several places that talks about the use of TOSSAs, and I think in one place it talks about a cost of $500,000. How, how many total TOSSAs does this plan incorporate?
Five.
Five?
Five.
And during the budget crisis the last five years, we made an effort to eliminate the use of TOSSAs. So, now we're bringing them back. Where is that money coming from, the $500,000? What, what's not being done, that we're gonna use $500,000 for more TOSSAs?
The various spots, but like Dr. Cash just mentioned, there is a limit to what we can spend here at the district office. But to your point, and your point about TOSSAs, one of the things that Dr. Drati and I are finding is with all these changes that you, you see and all the different initiatives coming to, to us, our, our departments need, and our staff, excuse me, our staff need more support, more folks, um, with that, those types of skills and ability to offer support, to come up from the ranks, to give our, our, our teacher support and to help- principals in terms of gathering enough information to to disseminate to our staff. So those TOSSAs are really going to be those folks that are going to be doing a lot of the nitty-gritty type of work that Dr. Drotti and I simply don't have the time. And to be really honest, the the expertise to be able to do with all of our staff, we need folks to go into the schools and to offer this type of support, because otherwise, we're leaving it to the ability of of principals who have a lot of, a lot of knowledge and experience, but to lead all the changes that that we have coming our way, it's going to take more folks. And to to develop the capacity of our staff right now is going to require at least five TOSSAs at this point.
So I mean, I was struck by what you said, that TOSS, the elimination of TOSSAs would be brought forward as a budget saving. Because unless were they spent, they paid for out of the unrestricted monies?
Some of them were.
Oh, wow. Well, our proposal is they're all have title money, so that that it wouldn't be a general fund expenditure. And a TOSA is a teacher on a special assignment.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
And as Mr. Handel said, one of the issues, one of the 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 underlying theories of action in relationship to this is teacher leadership, and all those TOSSAs are teachers. And we need teachers leading teachers in this effort. And and I think the the whole way in which Dr. Drotti and Mr. Handel have already begun the transition to the Common Core really emphasizes teacher leaders. And this is just a continuation of that, probably in a more formalized way.
So these TOSSAs will be specially trained, they'll go someplace for high-level training?
They will receive support and training in all the different areas that we believe they need training. And specifically in instructional coaching, and whatever initiative, whether it's project-based learning, cultural proficiency, we're going to make sure we have our folks highly trained. But one thing I want you to to realize is, we're going to pull folks that probably already have a lot of this experience in training, so that we invest in them, but they're already to a point where we feel comfortable sending them out to support our staff at that time. But we are going to provide tremendous amount of support to our folks.
So this will be existing staff members promoted to this new function, or taken out of the line duty, and?
That is what we see right now, yes.
And I think part of the importance of that is building our district's capacity to do this work, as opposed to relying entirely upon outside expertise. This, the, I I've said it many times, and I was in, I was at two schools today in classrooms, and I am constantly and continually impressed by the high quality of instruction that's going on in our schools. And we have great teachers. Our job, I believe, through the TOSSAs, is to get that expertise out to other schools and classrooms throughout the district. And, you know, drawing my own experience as a teacher, I'm much more comfortable listening to Mr. Handel, who also teaches world history with me, than I am going to a training at the district office and listening to someone else from another school district across America, no matter how famous or how wonderful that person is. I'm more likely to learn more, change my practice more if I'm working closely with a colleague of mine.
Dr. Buss?
Actually, I was just going to comment on that, Dr. Cash, about that same point you just made, which is that if you look at research, research also says that that is the case. Teachers will learn more from their peers than having someone else. Informal teaching groups actually provide a lot more opportunity for them to learn, and even when you are in a formal setting, than you would from someone from the outside coming in, talking to you, this is what you need to do.
Ms. Edelson?
I have a question. Seems like a lot of resources will go towards this, and I'm in support of that. I have a, how will it be assessed? Is this successful? Is, you know, have the teachers learned what they need to, to, you know, be able to do well on these subjects? Will there be a process of evaluating what's working and what's not?
There will be a few different pieces. We're going to try and triangulate information we get from more formal teacher observations to informal walkthroughs from from principals to student activities that we see in terms of lesson planning. We're hoping to get surveys created before the end of next year, so that that can help us gather information, student achievement. Obviously, we're going to see the creation of Common Core-aligned units, and as we update and improve those units of study, there's a bunch of information that we're looking to right now. Dr. Drotti and I and principals and staff have to to formalize those things, but I I think at this point, we're going to have a lot of information. I think the problem is going to be is trying to figure out strategically what is the best information to use to see how we're doing.
Right, and if, and you can vary it as you go?
That's right.
Okay, good.
It has to be, it has to, as Ms. Parker stated at the beginning, has to be a somewhat of a fluid document based on circumstances as they change.
And I think that that's actually a really important point, because I think that although the word restriction has been used for some categoricals, I actually thought that some categoricals that under the governor's plan will be eliminated were good things, that I don't actually know would have been in place if it wasn't for a mandate. So
Yes.
I mean, I think how that connects with whatever happens with the governor and local control funding formula will be something that I think we'll have to incorporate in this professional development. We may, as a board, as a district, decide we don't want to get rid of all the categoricals, and so some that we're no longer getting specific funding for, we may want to incorporate here. So I think that that's a discussion that's to be had. And just to piggyback on the teachers on special assignment, my recollection is also that there were other issues, not just the financial issues that came up with teachers in special assignment, that included sometimes teachers on special assignments for a very long period of time. And then there was a question on whether they were really a teacher in special assignment, or if they had assumed a different position as a whole. So I think that it was a much more complicated conversation that happened around teachers with special assignments. And I think as far as the training, I'm absolutely supportive of teachers training teachers. But I do think that, as all learners, we have to make sure that there are different varieties and different ways to learn, because that's definitely one, but there's other times where we've really needed to bring in experts from outside of our districts per the request of our teachers. So just want to make sure that we think incorporate that into the plan.
I think it's in the plan, Yulmo.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
Differentiation will be the key.
Yes.
All right.
So the second part of the strategic plan update pertains to action step one, holding high expectations, and in particular, 1J and 1K, and that's wall-to-wall technology infrastructure and a one-to-one computing program in at least 25% of the schools. I wanted to give the board an update about conversations we've been having with our principals. In February, I asked, I just was at a principals meeting, and I said to the principals, "Okay, how many of you, if I said September or August, you all get one-to-one computing? How many of you would like that?" And just to kind of see the look on their face and see where they were, who was scared, who was excited, who was dumbfounded. And and so it was, it was good just to hear them talk amongst themselves and ask questions of me as well. And after that, I began to get some emails from principals saying, "We're ready. I want to do it. I want to do one-to-one." I didn't follow up with anything else. I didn't send any more directives out to them, any more questions. I didn't say we were going to do it. I didn't say anything. But it was fascinating. And so I started to hear, and I heard from a number of principals, enough to the point where I said, "Well, there may be other principals that are thinking about this, so I I need to call a meeting." So I sent an email out to all the principals, and I said, "If you're interested, if you think you would like to look at a one-to-one deployment program, come to a meeting, a voluntary, you don't need to be there, here at the district office." We had Todd very quickly do a presentation on what he and Meg and others learned when they were up at Apple in relationship to what kind of capacity would be required infrastructure-wise, leadership-wise, community-wise, teacher-wise. And then I asked the principals that were there to go back to their staffs and have a conversation with them, and also with themselves and their key opinion leaders and at their school site, and and then email me and let me know if they were still interested. They still felt they were in a spot that they wanted to explore further, sort of one-to-one program. Subsequently to that, I have received emails from 11 schools, I believe, might be 12, saying they feel like they're ready. And so the process we're engaged in now is that we are going out in a very structured manner, Mr. Handel, Dr. Drotti, myself, Mr. Rickman, and at a voluntary staff meeting with teachers only, and asking teachers about six questions, and then answering any questions that they may have to help gauge, to give us some what we think will be important information about those four areas of infrastructure, leadership, community, teachers. And then, once we've completed that process, which will probably, I believe, ends in May, actually, on May 29th, I think is the last staff meeting, we'll have a conversation about what what schools, if any, are, we think are probably in the most ready stage to to begin having serious conversations about a one-to-one deployment. We'll then bring in those school leaders, and we'll have a conversation about how best to survey parents and get information from parents about parents' interest in and willingness to be part of and ideas about. And then with that data, we'll continue meeting throughout the summer to develop what we hope would be some sort of proposal that we would have for a pilot program, kind of the beta testers on a one-to-one, and that would be one-to-one school-wide at the schools that we felt were ready to go, that we would look at implementing sometime in the fall, not by the first day of school. That would include, those meetings would include the opportunity for us to get together and kind of go through all the what-ifs scenarios. You know, what if this happens? What if that happens? What would we do if this person said this, or this person said that, or how would we manage this, or what would we do in this scenario? There's so many what-ifs that, you know, we, you get, you get a million of them when you talk to teachers about it, because they start thinking. But we'd want to get everyone together, kind of go through them, so that we could, to the greatest extent possible, not perfectly, have the kind of a master list of what-ifs that we would go through and try to develop answers for. The idea is, the device we're looking at is iPads. We think that's probably the best device for us to look at. Our bias is that we would want students to own the iPads if possible. We think that that's a, is a completely different way of looking at the use of the iPad, as opposed to it just being a tool or a district-issued textbook. It becomes part of the environment in which they're learning. We know that not everybody will own iPads, so we'll, we would, much of the what-if conversation would center around how we would manage the idea of having every student have an iPad, what that would look like. We have, I think we have a really good idea. I think it's important that we move in this direction, but we don't have the answers to all the questions, and my belief is, is that that there's going to be with more people, a greater opportunity or greater likelihood that will at least get a lot more of the questions asked and answered than just if it's just me and Todd. So that's the process that we're engaged in, and we're looking forward to it, and I, as part of the strategic plan, wanted to give you an update.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Ms. Parker?
Lots to talk about with that particular one, and I'd love to see this come back as an item just for us to to talk about more specifically as as things progress. I I really want to be careful because I don't see iPads as being, I see iPads as being tools in the way paper and pencil are tools for students. And on one side, I have not seen anything for districts that go, you know, all iPad. I've not, I haven't seen any data that says this raises student achievement, and and I've seen other districts make that claim, and I know that we're not going to make that claim here.
That's absolutely correct.
The other side is, just like paper and pencil for all students, we are moving to the point where you need this kind of tech for all students, because this is just, you know, the way this, the the learning environment has changed, and so many tools that are used, you know, integrate the online web environment and apps and, you know, things that are available here that just aren't available any other way. I do have a lot of parents that have said, "Doesn't raise student achievement. You have $300, $300 million in facilities needs. Where is this money coming from? Why wouldn't you, you know, how how do you justify spending it in this direction rather than that direction?" So that's something that we would need to talk about. My biggest concerns probably are on the idea of either the students owning the iPads, or expecting parents to lease to own, or something along those lines. I'd really would like to have a thorough discussion about that as as proposals come forward. Already, I think it probably gets exacerbated at the lower grade levels, where, you know, students, there are third graders that are bringing their iPad minis to school. And first, there's the district liability issue. If we're, if we're saying that sometimes you really do need it for a class, are we contradicting our policies that say you bring it at your own risk, and, because we will have these stolen, these things are stolen already. So that's a concern. But then there's just the idea of two second graders sitting together. One has, you know, their own iPad mini, their own apps on it, where they're doing this thing on it, they want that on it. And then this one doesn't, and doesn't understand, maybe goes home and tells their parents, "I have to have one of these," and, you know, causes misunderstandings for parents that really don't understand themselves whether or not they need to get this. And I'm really concerned about school culture and climate on this one, and equity issues. So I think that that's something that I'd like to talk about further.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Ms. Edelson?
Aspects of this remind me of the instrumental music program on some levels, because I know as a parent, when the child brings home an instrument, if it's property of the school, the parent signs their, you know, that if the instrument is damaged or lost, they'll pay back $500 for a violin, or something to that effect. So I think there's been success with this issue. I mean, obviously, this, we're talking about, you know, a tool used daily probably, and, you know, kids are taking it in and out of the classroom, and, you know, it's different. But, you know, there again, you know, how do you do it? You know, I mean, it's it's really a big question. So with the instruments, I know, you know, with the violins, it was, you know, they're, every child needs an instrument. So does the district buy it and then loan it to the child so that they can use it, or does the parent invest in it? So there's, we've addressed some of these issues before.
Mr. Heron?
Dr. Cash, you do a great job of keeping us informed on a regular basis of an awful lot of things. I hope going forward, you'll do the same on this. Hearing hearing from outside sources about a program, you know, this, I had no idea so much had been going on in the background on this particular topic. You know, and and to hear that theoretically, some schools have actually had votes on it, I don't know if that's true or not. But I see that Bill Woodard is going to be sharing with the PTA an exciting school-wide program such as One-to-One iPads Initiative that seeks to put an iPad in the hands of every student. And that sounds a lot more advanced than what what I'm hearing. So it seems like out there in the field, it might be taking on a life of its own, and?
Well, it has. I mean, we have an elementary school where every fifth and sixth grader already has a tablet. That was done by the school's own initiative. And we have high schools where big segments of students have already engaged in the process that's been described to you and have purchased iPads. You know, all, 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 all that stuff is happening. So the the attempt by myself is to try to, you know, have some sort of understanding and if it's, if it's, create some sort of replicable pilot. And it is in the strategic plan that we would in fact do this.
Absolutely, and that, just the more information you can give us, the
I didn't know Bill Woodward was, I don't, I haven't seen that. I didn't know he was talking to the PTA.
And, yeah, tomorrow night, yeah. And, you know, so just the more you can let us know as these things take place and to make sure that the equity is there. I mean, it'd be awful to have a class that has, some of the students have an iPad and some don't. I think that's going up the wrong tree in light of some recent legislation, so.
Well, yeah, the idea is that it would be a school-wide phenomenon, that every student would have one.
Every student by grade level, or just overnight, everybody?
It could be by grade level. Those are all kind of the what-if questions, you know, it's unclear, some Those are all kind of the what-if questions, you know, it's, it's unclear, some people don't believe a kindergartner benefits from it, some people think that a kindergartner benefits as much as anyone else, so...
I've got a two-year-old granddaughter who can swipe on an iPad. I mean, boom, 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 it's pretty easy. So, yeah, the more information we have, I, I would appreciate knowing how this thing goes down, because...
You might have to share information with me, because I didn't know about that.
This is a big one, yeah.
Dr. Bass?
I just had a quick question, and in terms of, I mean, are we, are we, as we move forward, one of my questions would be is that, are we looking at iPads?
Yes.
Are we looking at tablets? I mean, there's a distinction. You can have an Android device that doesn't cost as much as this, and they're getting cheaper day by day. I have a seven-inch Android that costs half of this, of this price. And so I, I would look at that, that would be one of my questions, is alternatives to this, that could still function and still work. I mean, I noticed that when we're going to look at the next item, that they have the alternative, which is not just iPads, but Android devices as well, or PCs, right? So I think that, that would be one of my things to, to want to look at and to consider and to think about it in terms of different things, and I do agree with my colleagues that having access to technology is also an important issue in terms of when we're looking at equity. It is an equity issue. If we do not provide that opportunity for students, they fall behind. And I think that is an incredible thing that is happening across our school district when you have people who have access to technology and other people don't. It's not, you know, it used to be the question, internet technology, access to the internet. Well, that's, that's, we're long past that point. Now we're talking about actually having it with you all the time. And so I think those kind of questions would be something that I would want to consider and talk, and talk about in, in a deeper way. Thank you.
And I will echo just, I think, I, I would hope that our district wouldn't prescribe to a brand, because I think that that would make it more difficult. But then I do recall, I mean, this is, this is what happens with technology. And I think of the graphic calculator, and when there was, you know, you could borrow it at school, or you could try to see if the school, you know, had a way for you to take it home. And I know that for me and my family, we actually opted to go through the school path, and eventually it became my own. And so I, I don't, I think there's a lot of gray. I don't think that this is all good or bad, but I always worry on anything that is perceived as you must have this, and you must buy a certain brand or a certain, by a certain time or a certain day, and to the students who aren't going to have it at home. That's going to be an issue, how we think about that. So I, I guess, for me, I'm not ruling it out as a good, as a bad thing, just because I know that that's how I got my first graphic calculator, and I don't know that I would have otherwise if it wasn't for district incentive, or district kind of thinking creatively about how other families purchase this. So I think that that's something to discuss, but I do think we have to be careful. We have to be careful that it's not perceived as a district is asking or requiring, you know, and this might just be a perception thing, students to go out and purchase a tablet of sorts. So that's probably a big legal piece that I'm worried about, about what it's going to sound like to students and to parents. And I want to be clear that no matter what happens, what we do, students will have access to something in the classroom, no matter who you are, no matter if you bring it or if you don't bring it. But I do, I, I don't think that this phenomenon is completely new. I mean, we've done it with other pieces of technology, and we've had to think about stolen graphic calculators and how, you know, we just make sure. So I think it's probably good to continue to have this conversation, but also realize that we've been here as a district before in talking about this.
And we're not on the cutting edge here, so, in relationship to one-to-one computing devices for students. So it's been done and being done across the nation right now, so, absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you. A lot of information, good information. And we are, I think, closing with our Smarter Balance Assessment Overview and Readiness Update.
Mr. Rickman? Or is it Mr. Hendel?
Actually, I was going to give the first piece. I'm going to do the first, first third of it, if you will. Mr. Tedeschi, would you mind? So, we wanted to give you guys an update on, on, on the Smarter Balance Assessment, and our district's readiness to actually administer this particular assessment. If you go to the next slide, you'll see some information that, it's just probably review for most of you, but, you know, the next-generation assessments, and how they, they measure achievement and growth, and how we administer it online, and there's going to be multiple measures, and it'll be operational in the year 14, 15. So not this coming year, but the following year, we will be actually taking the assessment for the first time officially.
And, and I'm going to interrupt. La Colina is doing, is doing the pilot, scientific pilot right now. Peabody completed the scientific pilot last month, and La Cuesta starts this week.
Well, that, Dr. Rick, uh, Dr. Ed, Todd Rickman will, will, will give us a little more information about that. Todd and I were actually at La Colina the other day to see them run their first crop through, and, and we, we thought, but, well, we have a lot of information to share out. So the next slide, you'll see the, the computer adaptive technology for the summative and interim assessments. One of the pieces that we, we're finding is, that's, gives it a much better, gives us much better data in terms of student achievement, is that it's tailored to each student, so you see the adaptability if a student's score is higher. And we've talked about this, we've had this conversation. If they get a score, or they get something wrong, it, it tries to calibrate down or up, depending on how the, the child is responding to specific questions. There's different types of questions that they'll be asking, that we'll be showing you an example in a second, but also realize that the technology that they're going to be using is technology that, that we see already in the GRE, the Graduate Requirement Examination, the, the GMAT, and all graduate school requirement examinations for a master's or for a doctoral program. Assessment System Components, the next slide. Again, full range of Common Core assessment in English Language Arts, Mathematics for grades through, through, three through eight. We'll talk a little bit about interim assessments that the Smarter Balance will be offering. We're not sure if we're going to have to pay for those just yet, or if the district's going to have to be paying for it, or the state's going to pay for it. We don't know at this point.
It wasn't in the governor's budget proposal.
Well, that, there you go. You'll also see that there'll be a variety of question types, from selected response to short constructed response, extended constructed response, technology-enhanced, and performance task. And that one's going to come up a lot, if you go to the next slide. The Assessment System Components, you look at performance tasks specifically, extended projects, everything having to do with real-world writing, online research. These, these tasks will require a student to take up to two periods to answer, and these types of questions will be offered in both the interim assessment, what we sometimes call benchmark assessment, and the summative, the end of year. And this will be in all the grades being assessed, and using rubrics, rubrics evaluated by teachers. What is a performance task? Go to the next slide, and we click on the sample items, and I'm pretty sure, a couple of you have probably already seen this, but if you look at this particular question, you'll see, uh-oh.
I've seen this.
We have seen this.
Yeah, it's my favorite one.
He should be pointing his test, one of the swimmers.
He should be pointing his test, says the former swimmer. So you see that the question asked down below, explain how the results of the race would change if the race used a clock that rounded to the nearest tenth. And that's not a A, B, C, D-type response. It takes a student to actually have the ability to be able to round up to the nearest tenth, and to be able to, you know, use that information and talk about what the differences would be with those changes. So that's a much more complex response than a multiple choice, and...
One of the things that we've learned so far in relationship to the scientific pilots is that if our students don't use technology every day, they are at a significant disadvantage in responding to the prompts. And in particular, the junior high, and sixth, seventh, and eighth grade prompts, which require students to manipulate the pages, go in and out of the test to other places on the internet, to be able to keyboard, to be able to manipulate either a mouse or the, the, the touch, yeah, the touchscreen. It's stir, it's no bueno.
So I, this, this leads me to my, one of my observations.
It wasn't a good enough English phrase.
The other, the other day, as, as Todd and I were, were watching these La Colina seventh graders take this, this pilot assessment, we're walking around, and, and one of the kids, as he, as he began the assessment, I saw him looking around, and I went over to him, I said, "Is everything okay?" He says, "Do we really have to read all of this?" I said, "Yes, you do." And he goes, "This is really different." I said, "Absolutely is." So they had text right next to each other, where students had to, again, use those skills that they would be learning on these mobile devices or these tablets, and knowing how to navigate through these tablets to get to certain information was a prerequisite skill to be able to navigate these new assessments. So it is going to be critical that our students have the time and the exposure to these particular tablets and technology, so that they know how to navigate these assessments and not put themselves at a distinct disadvantage. But the next slide, you'll see Assessment System Components, and I've, I've asked Todd to give his technology, or lend his technology expertise to, to the rest of the slides here.
So, one of the hardest decisions, or one of the factors that made it really tough to leave the classroom is I've been super excited for the Common Core. It's what we've been clamoring for as educators for a long time, and to be at La Colina and watch the kids take the test and what the test looks like, it's, it's amazing. Just so you know a little bit of the background, for the pilot exam at La Colina, we were testing it on multiple platforms, so kids are using it on MacBooks, they're using it on PCs, they're using it on PC laptops, and on iPads. So we're testing it to see how it, how it works on all of those devices. It was very interesting, there is a, a portal that the person who's administering the test logs into that can look at the progress of each student, and you can see the tests change, actually, that, that it's adaptive. So at first it started like, it had 36 questions, and all of a sudden, student answers a couple, and now they really only have 30 questions to answer, and then a couple more, and it jumps back up to, so you can actually see the adaptive nature of the test, you know, working as the kids are going. It's pretty amazing, actually. One of the most exciting parts is...
Question, do the students see that?
No.
Okay.
No, no, no.
I just wanted to make sure, because that was one of the flaws of the GRE that was criticized, okay?
Yeah, no, no, they do not. One of the most exciting parts of this is how quickly we get information back, and the, the ability for parents to review that, that information very quickly, and for us to make decisions about where to place kids the following year. You know, often we don't get star testing scores back until it's too late to put kids in classes. So, access to information, and with our illuminate system, we'll be able to tie in right into their databases and get information that teachers can look at and use as part of instruction immediately. So then the question becomes, are we ready to do this? We had to give this, when Dave asked us, when Dr. Cash asked us to put this presentation together, the question was, are we ready to give this now? And if we had to give it now, could we? And the answer is, yes, we, we, we could. We could do it right now if we needed to, and here's how we would do it. So, next slide, please. So tests will be taken on iPads. With physical keyboards, we have a lot of iPads in the, the district that we could use and roll out to other sites. With physical computers and in existing computer labs, much like the model we're using right now at La Colina, iPads would be pulled from all, pooled from all sites, shared for testing. And across the district, grade level would be tested each week of the testing windows. There's 12 weeks of the testing window, which is much larger than what we currently have. Go ahead. These are the testing times. Now keep in mind that this is, these are not timed tests, that kids can take as long as they need to complete, complete the tasks. These are just estimates that Smarter Balance has, has given. So for three through five ELA, it's about three, three and a half hours, and then for math, two and a half hours, for a total of six hours of testing. Six through eight is going to do, do about six and a half hours of testing, and 11th grade is going to do seven and a half hours of testing. This is what a testing schedule might look like. So we would divide the iPads up around the current iPads that we have, if we had to do it tomorrow, around the, the district, we'd have all third graders at each site test, then all fourth graders, fifth, and so on, until we got through it, just for fairness and, it's, you know, one of the problems, I think, is that when you have sites, if we did it site-based, then some sites would be like, "Yeah, we're at week one, and their site is at week 12, how, how is that fair? Our scores are going to look different." If we had to do it right now, this is the format we would use. And then, the, this page was just for your reference, for your own reference of, of what our requirements is, are, as far as the tech side of it. And the vast majority of our, our, our computers and iPads and notebooks are capable of doing the, the testing now if we had to. So that's all I have, if you have questions.
I, I have two other additional comments I wanted to make. The two most significant learnings so far from the pilot is, one, the one I shared previously, in relationship to kids needing constant and consistent practice daily in the use of technology. And two, is the teacher response to when technology fails, because technology will fail. It's not foolproof. It will not work perfectly, and it will not work perfectly right when you want it to. And so what we, what we've discovered significantly is that those teachers that are familiar with and have used technology, have it in their classroom on a regular basis, are much more comfortable when the beach ball of death occurs, if they're using, a Mac user, an Apple user, or the, the spinning clock, if you're, I guess that's, I can't remember if you're a PC user, happens. They're less likely to freeze themselves, and more likely to engage in problem-solving, troubleshooting activities. And what was noticed in particular at the elementary school that piloted is that the teacher's affect in response to that had an influence on the student's affect in response to, in their, in taking the test. So the bottom-line conclusion to that is very clear to me, and that is, we've got to get more technology in the hands of teachers and in classrooms and in students, the sooner the better, because of, of how they're going to have to use it and respond to it, so...
Thank you, Dr. Cash.
And I have to have Todd stand next to me sometimes when I get the beach ball of death, because I have, my affective filter goes up quick.
Well, and I actually had a question. Did every student who took it at Peabody and La Colina, and who will take it at La Cuesta, use an iPad, or did they use combo desktop and iPad?
A combination of all of them.
Yeah, we're trying out to see what seems to work the best.
And, you know, one of the concerns was that some people brought up is on an iPad, the screen is so small. But what people don't realize is the resolution is actually better, so, so you, you see more on an iPad, believe it or not, it's smaller, but you actually see more, does that make sense at all, than you would on a, a big screen? So I was looking at that when they were taking it, I was looking, there's some problems with the test. There's some, it, some kids had problems on the PCs, there's a section where you had to drag sentences and put them in a specific order, and it didn't work. On the iPad, there was a problem with selecting some, so it's not, they don't have, it's not perfect yet, but it, it's pretty amazing. It's, it's fairly amazing, yes.
Ms. Idelson?
I was thinking, this is going to make filling in the bubble seem really easy for some kids. But KEYT did a piece last week on Common Core, maybe some of you saw it, and Beth Farnsworth brought up a topic of feedback stress of this test-taking. Is there anything we're doing or monitoring anything about that aspect of it? I mean...
The Common Core test?
Yeah, the, the, in the testing that kids, I, she showed where, you know, there's a, you know, they're analyzing whether they're squeezing the mouse, or whether they're having more fidgetiness, and all this... having more fidgetiness, and all this, all these things. I didn't, I had never heard of any of this, but I was just curious if.
If we're monitoring that?
Monitoring any, you know, how this testing in this method will affect students in other ways.
No, I, you know, I can only speak anecdotally from being a teacher and having a wife who's an elementary school teacher and watching, you know, third graders sit and take a test all day and start sobbing because, I mean, it, it's already stressful.
Right.
I, I have no, we have a monitor.
We heard exactly the opposite. Peabody surveyed students, and the overwhelming majority of students' response was that it was different but better this way. In fact, students felt it was not more difficult.
Right. I don't know if you've experienced it. I remember taking bubble tests when I was a kid, and that one time where you missed a bubble someplace, and you get to the end, and you're like.
Oh, my gosh.
So it actually won't let, there, there are things that are built into it that they won't let you go forward. If you've missed something, you can actually mark, like, I'm gonna come back to this one, so you mark it, and then it forces you at the end, hey, you gotta go back. These are the ones that you marked, that you had to go back. So there's nice things that are built in, that I know that if I was taking it, it would alleviate some of my stress. But I think tests are inherently stressful.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Parker?
Just following up on what Ms. Idelson said. I think she's referring to the piece in, in the KEYT piece referred to, apparently, the U.S. Department of Education has said that there are like wristbands, that there, it was more of a Big Brother is monitoring, not that there was gonna be a higher stress level.
Oh, I see.
But the Big Brother is gonna be monitoring how your student is responding.
No.
You know, and.
Like astronauts in a capsule and NASA monitoring.
Exactly, exactly. So I don't want the public to think that that's gonna be happening here in San Barbara.
I didn't think it would be, but.
I understand, yeah, no, absolutely not.
But there's also, there has been research on adaptive tests, and I think, you know, there was a lot of feedback when the GRE did this. And I know I had the opportunity in March to sit with a representative from Smarter Balance, and she convinced me that they've learned a lot from previous adaptive, standardized adaptive tests that have been used, even in different grades, because at the end of the day, there is a psychological factor. And so a lot of it has to do also with the algorithm that's used to make sure that the test is engaging but not too challenging and not too easy. Because part of what produces stress, and whether it's a written or a computer one, is also the test itself. And so, will it be perfect? I'm not really convinced it will. But I also do think that, speaking with the representatives from Smarter Balance, they've learned from other tests that have produced a little bit more anxiety.
And on May, I believe it's May 29th, they're releasing the test, a form of the test to everyone, so you can go online and take it yourself and see.
Parents, kids, newspapers, friends, Romans, countrymen.
Yeah.
Mr. Herron?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a blatant advertisement at the moment. You talk about everybody needs access to computer, use it every day. Mr. Handel, as you well know, Computer for Families will give every fourth, fifth, and sixth grader a computer for home. They will have training sessions for parents. They'll have training sessions for the kids in classes. McKinley and Hardy, we do it at third grade. So there's no excuse for a family not to have a computer at home in the elementary schools to get this practice that they need. So I would urge you to make sure the principals understand this. Sometimes it's like drawing, tearing out teeth to get participation. So I hope that, you know, if a fourth grader has a computer that we gave them, it doesn't work, they can get a new one, you know? Just turn it in. And when there's a problem, we just give a new computer. We don't repair it for this, for the, for the family. We just give them a new one.
I actually have a call in to Chris White, so.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Any additional questions or comments?
I just want to add one more. All the questions that you were asking about the iPad one-to-one, I have a lot of answers for those questions. Probably not great answers, but, you know, anytime we can, Dr. Cash can set it up, we can kind of push through some of those.
I probably should have that conversation at some point, so, thank you.
Add it to your list.
Add it to my list. I have a running list. I will. All right. Thank you. And so this concludes our conference agenda items. We don't have any consent items that we need to return to. We've already talked about some coming events and future agenda items. I do have a more, a conversation about our, perhaps AR 7215, and expanding that and what it means for match money and bond use. I have the one-to-one program for computers on there. Anything else you'd like to see, Dr. I mean, Mr. Herron?
Good. A couple agenda, a couple event items. On the 20, 22nd, there's a Parents' Guide to Behavior Supports Within the IEP Process put on by our specialization parent, for parent training. So I hope that gets wide distribution. I hope our special ed families know about that. It's my understanding, on the 28th, which is two weeks from tonight, which poses a minor problem for us, the parent resource room downstairs is gonna have an open house.
We're gonna have it open before the board meeting and have a ceremony to open it.
Okay, before the, okay, so, just put on your calendar a little earlier than normal. But Sherry Ray has done a ton of work putting that thing together, and hopefully it'll be a place where parents can go for information. As far as agenda items, I mentioned earlier that I went to the first responders by autism, and I see Marcia is here, and she did a great job putting that on. But it became very apparent that it's vital that the police department or probation, anybody involved gets notified if a child is missing very quickly. The chances of survival depend upon fast notification. And then I read the article that I mentioned, that one in two autistic kids that take off end up seriously, a lot of them, because of water, end up in the water and drown. So it's vital that our staff, if they're missing a child with autism, that they notify somebody quickly. And there is an education code I found that's referenced in our 5142.1, Section 49370 of the Education Code, which puts a burden on our teachers and administrators and school aides to do something in a timely manner. In the policy discussion we're having in the future, I would like 41, 5142.1 to be looked at in conjunction with Section 49370 and see if something should be incorporated into our policy on our, putting our staff on notice as to what their obligation is. Right now, it mentions it in, in the fine print at the bottom as an, as an item, but it doesn't really spell it out as to what that obligation is. I think we may have something in our safety plans, but I'm not quite certain on that.
Mr. Herron, can you just repeat that again? That was Policy 5249?
5142.1.
51.
And it's Education Code 49370.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional items? Dr. Bass?
I would actually like to see if we could explore, you know, we had one of the parents talk this evening about providing more opportunities for parents to learn about resources, especially for those families who do not have sort of the background, the experience of social capital that many of us do. And I think that would be a great topic. I recently read an LA Times article that was talking about LA Unified, they had a parent college, which was exactly what the parent was, tonight was, was speaking about, which if you ever have an opportunity, I'll try to look for it and send it to the board. But I thought it was a really great opportunity for parents to learn about what it is to go to college and the resources that it takes to, to get there.
Okay, so parent program. Anything else? All right, so with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.